Good afternoon, everybody. We've got a couple of real special things that we're gonna do before we get our meeting started. And Paulo, I'd like to have you come up and I'm gonna make sure I... Bartasaki. Uh huh. Paulo Bartasaki. And at any rate, the special thing that we do, and it seems like, and I see some of my old friends sitting out here, we're gonna do a proclamation, and this is Italian Heritage Month. And Paulo, before I quickly read it, you have any comments? I mean, we've celebrated this month for many years and...
Forty-four.
Forty-four. And we're proud of our Italian heritage in the city of Des Moines and all the years that they have been such an important part of the city, and they continue to celebrate their heritage in their country of origin. And I think it's important that we all can remember some of those things. So Paulo, let me turn over to you. Just say a couple of words.
Honestly, I wasn't prepared for this. I don't know what to say. But please, come to our gala dinner, be part of the Italian-American community, support the Italian Heritage Month, and come to the Cultural Center. We working for have a new one for this. We like every one of you be involved and help us to have a new one.
Great job. So our proclamation reads as follows. Whereas in 1492, Christopher Columbus, a man of Italian heritage, made his first voyage to America, and whereas the first Columbus Day celebration was held in 1792 in New York City, the 300th anniversary of the Italian man's landing in America. President Franklin D. Roosevelt proclaimed Columbus Day as a national holiday, and to date, it is the only day on which all Pan-Americans join in celebration. And whereas Columbus Day is a legal federal holiday throughout the United States, and this year will be celebrated on October 14, 2019. Italian Heritage Month will be celebrated throughout the city during the entire month of October. The annual observation will be at the Columbus Monument on the south lawn of the state Capitol that same day. Now therefore, I, TM Franklin County, on behalf of the city council and other citizens of the city of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 is Italian Heritage Month, and in honor of all Italian-Americans in the city of Des Moines and across America. Let's give them a great big hand. Let's take a quick photo. We have a young lady here, and I'd like to have, before we get started, if I could have the whole council kind of come down here with me, and Mr. Manager and Mr. Attorney, if you would as well. We'll get a little even balance over here. Come on, we needed somebody else over here. Thank you, thank you Connie. So we have a certificate of special recognition, and I'd like to have Diane Rao come over and stand with us. This is presented to the City Clerk of Des Moines, Diane Rao. Now therefore, I, TM Franklin County, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of the city council, do hereby issue this certificate of special recognition for the dedication and service provided by City Clerk Diane Rao to the city of Des Moines, Iowa. Diane has played an important role in our city's history. She approved more than 1,600 ordinances, provided countless hours of sage wisdom, and she's not kidding. Adjourned so many city council meetings, I can't even count them, meetings as late as 10/22, and has been involved in almost every major initiative the city has undertaken over the past few decades, from planned DSM to budget meetings and beyond. Throughout her public service career of 35 years as an account clerk, a permit clerk, a licensed clerk, senior licensed clerk, chief deputy city clerk, and for the past 16 years as our city clerk. Diane served the residents and visitors of Des Moines efficiently and effectively and with such a positive attitude. Diane's dedication and enthusiasm in which she approaches leading the city clerk's office, volunteer committee positions, providing delicious homemade refreshments for city council on occasion, especially around the state fair, I want you all... Planning events, and numerous other roles is an example to us all. It is fitting that today, during her last city council meeting, may it her 640th career city council meeting, we recognize her commitment to the city of Des Moines, city council, the residents of our city with this certificate of special recognition. The city of Des Moines joins in recognizing Diane for all that she has accomplished, and thanks her for the significant contributions she has made to the city and our community. This is presented this 23rd day of September 2019. Diane? I should ask Diane if she has a couple of words that she would like, and then we have some other stuff, and I'll turn it over to our council and our councilman, Chris Coleman, who has been here for a while, is retiring also, and he has been here longer than any of the rest of us, and we've asked him to kind of step up and say a couple of things. But I'd like to turn it over to Diane now.
Thank you. As many of you know, I'm a crier, so we have declared no crying in City Hall Day today. So I'm gonna try and get through my remarks. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for allowing me to serve for 35 years, and I've been honored to assist them and assist the citizens of Des Moines with their needs, and hopefully help the city become the great city it is. I would like to thank my husband. He has put up with a lot over the years. You know, with my frustrations after a crazy day, but the fact that I made him get a permit every time he did any kind of work at our house is one thing I did. I would like my staff to stand up. No crying in City Hall. If these are the hardest-working people I have ever known, then they are committed to their excellent customer service, and I could just go on and on and on, but thank you all. Now stay standing. I'd like all the other city employees to please stand up. You cannot work somewhere for 35 years without your colleagues becoming your family, and each and every one of you have a special place in my heart. Thank you. Now, I'm also gonna tune in on Monday nights to just make sure everybody's behaving themselves, and I will be sending emails if I feel the need. Thank you.
Okay. Would all your staff come up here with us? Let's get them in this kind of group picture, and then we'll proceed with some other stuff here.
right here for friends of Diane and all city staff to wander through, and we hope citizens come by too and thank her for her years of service. Afterwards, the council and Stuart and Diane are all gonna go to a little private dinner, no register, we won't talk shop at all, but it'll be a nice way for us to thank Diane personally, and we have something for you that night that's more personal. But we wanted to give you a couple of things tonight as a token of our appreciation.
Sweet. We'll start with this. Flowers. Those up there.
Thank you.
That's the sweetness. Oh, okay, and sweetness. Talk, let's go flowers, right?
Those meetings, one, they listed lasted until 10/22. One of the things that's amazing about Diane's experience is every once in a while, I'd ask her, trying to plan family events or whatever, "Do you think it'll be a long meeting or a short meeting?" She never said, "Long meeting, short meeting, extra-long meeting." She always said like, "8/22." And as far as I know, she's won virtually every staff contest for the prediction of the longest or how long each meeting will last. One of the reasons we stay on time is that she had a very important tool that the council appreciated.
Is for my missing bell? It's gone. I stole it. Right. What happened? What happened? I can hear what's inside. the bell when one of them was speaking. It's not happened, but it's occurred to me. If anyone comes to the reception on the 30th, you will hear a list of 10 things that I'm going to miss, and 10 things I'm not going to miss. And the number-one thing I'm not going to miss is having to ding this bell.
This is more for Laura and Kay. I did buy a replacement bell, so you can use that one tonight, but we'll put that one up there. And I know the council wants to say something as well, but hey Laura, we, as a council, we're looking for something to do to honor Diane, and as far as I'm concerned, while the council gets a lot of credit for things that happen, we're really a city of staff, of people that work here every day, and three people report to us. We have the city manager and the city attorney, and I think of Diane as the chief hospitality officer, our city clerk. Everybody felt welcomed, and everybody knew that they had a caring heart and a listening ear. And when you walk into City Hall, we have a little area now with a TV and some couches and just kind of a little welcome center there in the foyer. And so tonight, at the end of the agenda, with the magic fingers of Laura and Jeff Lester, on our agenda is an action to place this sign down there before your party next week, and we're going to name it the Diane Rao City Hall Foyer. And the foyer will be named in honor of one of Des Moines' most dedicated public servants, City Clerk Diane Rao, retired on September 30, 2019, after 35 years of service to Des Moines. During her tenure, she welcomed thousands of people into City Hall with enthusiasm and kindness, and we want people to know that forever.
I'm gonna be honored to have that.
I get to do the invocation tonight, and it's a little personal tribute to things that I love about Diane. The one thing that I'd say that I always find humorous, and then I'll let the other council members speak, if that's all right, Mayor. People like to say in organizations like the city that, you know, they know where the bodies are buried, you know, they got an inside track. In the city, when somebody says they know where the body's buried, that basically means they know Diane's number, because she's the only one that knows where all the bodies are buried. And she has been such help to any of us that have served in this role, or lead a department, or start new at the city. Your service, hospitality, and kind nature will be missed dearly.
I didn't know we were going to speak. I will speak. I didn't have anything rehearsed, and she knows how difficult this is going to be for me. I'll tell you, from the moment I walked into her office five years ago when I won my first election, she has been kind, considerate, caring, just, she's an amazing lady. A lot of you that don't know her personally, she's just, I don't know what else to say, but you are amazing. Your staff is amazing. When I was coming upstairs, I told one of them that, you know, we've never had to worry about the city clerk's office. I've never had one complaint, one email, nothing since I've been elected, and that is because of the leadership there. So thank you.
Diane, I just wanna echo what Joe said, but four years ago, when I walked in here, you welcomed me, you did everything you could to make me feel welcome and provide me with the information that we needed, so thank you.
And I'll say the three words everybody loves to hear, "I'll be brief." Same thing happened to me. You know, when I first got elected, the first person to greet me was Diane, and I was about as green as she could be, she's pointing me in directions, "Here's where you need to go, stop over at HR, do this, do that." I really started to feel like I was part of the team then. It meant so much to me. And then, as the years went by, and it's been, it was 2014's when I came walking through the door, she was protecting me from some of my own foibles, so I looked to her for all of the guidance, "What should we be doing? How do we get this done?" And people would always call, "Where do I get my permits?" Well, you're gonna start with Diane. Great job Diane, thanks.
Well, I'm newer on the council, but one of the things that is very clear about the way this city works is that it's really built on the service and dedication of our staff. And no one exemplifies that service and dedication better than Diane and the city clerk's office. And that's one of the most important things that you bring to the team, is you set that model for all of us, and we'll strive to honor that every time we walk through that welcome center.
What do you say to a legend in Des Moines? You've been so helpful, having come from one elected office to another elected office, to make that transition, you made it seamless, and giving everybody the advice and the information you need is, it's so critical when you go into this role, so we can't appreciate you enough. And I know that I might be seeing you at the state fair, so you're not gonna get away. If anybody doesn't know, she enters, how many contests?
Several.
Several food contests, so we'll be seeing you out there. Maybe you can give me a good apple recipe, so, thanks Diane.
Scott?
I think we're gonna have an opportunity to thank you. I would say that in representing the 2,000 employees, and not just right now, employees, but over the years, we want to all thank you, and we're gonna have that opportunity over next week or so to remind you of that, and share the stories that I know are dear to you as well, so thank you.
I've been here about nine. Diane and I work very closely together, and as Diane would probably tell you, if I go too long, only will she ring the bell, but she'll punch me in the throat. And everybody that works here knows what that means. Since I got here nine years ago, Diane has been somebody that I know I can always count on. My staff always counts on her and her staff. We work together, I think seamlessly, effortlessly. She knows things to bring to my attention, she knows things to direct to the manager and back to council, and she's always got the answer. She might go to someone else for them to make the delivery, but Diane's the one that knows what's going on around here, so we're gonna miss you, and I think I'm gonna miss you most of all, so.
You know, Diane, I've been so proud to represent the citizens of the city of Des Moines, and as the mayor, and worked with wonderful elected city leaders, and I will tell you, we don't always agree, but, you know, I think we always pledge to work together, and we spend lots of time at neighborhood meetings, we go around, and you know, when we need base information and people are calling us, and we need to do it, I always knew that Diane was the one that I could go to, is that not only did she know where the bodies were buried, she knew where the information was buried, that sometimes we needed to achieve what neighbors were asking. And until we got the app, of course, now with the potholes, she even, you know, had to spend a little bit of time with that sort of stuff. And, you know, I will also say, a lot of us in our lives, excuse me, have gone through some tough times. And I know that, you know, when I came down here, the clerk's office, all of these individuals that are sitting up here, but Diane, they were always here to support, to give advice, "Is there anything I can do? And how can we work through all these issues? How can we solve problems?" And Diane was one of those people, and almost like our mother. And she was there for us, and she supported all of us. And I'm just speaking a little bit for the people here, but I've gotta tell you also, she did that for the citizens of the city of Des Moines. And for that, Diane, we thank you, and we're proud. Let's get this meeting going. What do you think?
Yeah, we're gonna beat 10/22 today.
Yes.
All right, prior to the start of our meeting this evening, we're gonna have a quick message from our own city council member, Chris Coleman. Chris, would you like to have us all stand with you?
I think we can just sit.
All right, so we'll all remain seated. Chris?
Council, citizens, Diane. I grew up in a house with six kids, and one of my most vivid memories was sitting in our family room where we had a plaque on the wall, and it's something that has probably been the most quoted thing I've ever said in my life, and I put it up on the screen today, and it's a little twist of words, but it says, "It's nice to be important, but it's more important to be nice." And on your behalf, Diane, I taped that to everybody's desks up here, and I hope it stays there for a couple of weeks or months, and that it's a good reminder to all of us to do our job on behalf of the citizens, the way you always did your job. I never once heard you throw your weight around or pull rank with anybody. What was important wasn't that you were important, but that what you did was important, and it was always kind. Thank you very much for your service, and tonight, as just a way to memorialize and remember Diane and her spirit here, I taped that up, this sign here, on everybody's desk, and I hope each of us, and I hope the citizens of Des Moines, think about that today, and think about ways where we can continue being people that are kind, nice, courteous, hospitable to others, rather than be preoccupied about our own importance. And maybe it would be worth just a second of thinking about that. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Diane. Thank you, council.
Madam Clerk, let's call this meeting to order, and I'll ask you to take roll, please.
I didn't bring my roll sheet.
She's just catching on.
I'll just go around the room. Coleman.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
Here.
Gatto.
Here.
Fowney.
Here.
Westergaard.
Here.
Bozen.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, a good way to start the meeting. All right, item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved. I will tell everyone here that item number 4I, no, wait a minute, 4I was added. It's a consideration for a Class C liquor license for Club 200422 Indianola Avenue, pending electrical and zoning. Department approval, the sponsor was councilmember Gatto. For H, or for double I, I guess, was added. Consideration of five-day Class C wine license for the Wicked Wine Run on October 5, pending building, electrical, fireplace, zoning. Department approval, the sponsor was councilmember Mandelbaum. Regular agenda items, 17A was added. It's communication from Planning and Zoning Commission. 47 was corrected in roll call. 51 is corrected from councilmember Coleman, who's chair of the City Personnel Committee to discuss and consider the following, the receipt and approval of the City Council Personnel Committee's annual review and compensation review for the council's direct reports, and a compensation change for the mayor and council. One is the first consideration, the ordinance amending chapter two of the municipal code regarding salary for the mayor and council. 54 was withdrawn, it was at the request of Ms. Nordin. She is asking to put that item on October 14 meeting, and we will put it to officially accomplish what Mr. Coleman laid out in regarding the naming of the City Hall foyer, that's an extra item that was added. So with that, it's been moved, and...
Did you want to speak on some?
I wanted to pull something else out.
What item?
Twenty-one I.
Okay. Twenty-one I, we'll pull. Anything else? Yes, sir?
Mayor, County, I'd like to address item forty-nine, the second consideration of the proposed zoning ordinance.
Okay. At that time, I think that we'll, it'll be open, so we'd ask you to step up at that time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All else has been, we've got a motion to pass the remainder?
Seven yes?
All right. That takes us to item seventeen. Item seventeen, these are setting a date of hearing. Seventeen is on the vacation of Seventh Street Right-Away, located west of and adjoining 1233 Seventh Street, and a conveyance to Anawim, also known as Anawim Housing, for $1. That will be on 10/14/19. And A is a communication from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Seventeen, Mr. Coleman?
Thank you for giving me a chance. I didn't realize it was setting date of hearing. I should have paid attention to that. But I will just make a short comment before I move it. Councilman Gray and Councilman Bozen have been part of a group that's really doing some heavy lifting over at Seventh and Indiana. And I've been so impressed with our police department, our zoning officers, Assistant City Manager Pam has just done great work in addressing some neighborhood issues there, especially call out our Brooklyn, our NBSD officer there, and Anawim, who's cooperating to solve a big problem in the area. So, it's good stuff, and I'm really happy to have kind of watched it unfold. There's still some work to do, but congratulations to everybody that's already contributed to a really negative impact in the neighborhood safety issue, so.
To improving, same, right?
This is improving.
Definitely.
The safety issues.
Yeah, it's definitely an issue that did take a lot of effort to correct it.
Seven yes?
All right. Let's now move to twenty-one I. It was asked to be pulled by a member of the citizenry out here, so it's on a request from Rally Cap Properties LLC. Ryan Francios, who is the officer to rezone property located at 60124th Street and 60223rd Street, from R161 family low-density residential to limited R3 multi-family residential to allow the development of up to seven units of three-story rowhouse dwellings. That, this is setting the hearing for that discussion for 10/14. And I'll ask the individual who has it to be pulled to come to the podium, please.
Hi, LeAnn Stubbs, 2611 High Street. I know that this is just setting the date for the hearing, and so, given that you have time, I would just really humbly request that you all watch the planning and zoning meeting, the recorded taped meeting, because I spend my life in meetings. It was the most bizarre meeting I've ever been to. So that's, I'm just requesting that. You do that before the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, somebody move it?
Happy to move it.
Seven yes?
There has, we've just, a couple of minutes past five. I think I'd like to move to item forty-six very quickly, while we still have some, well, it looks like the rest of your staff has departed, but any rate, forty-six is approving the appointment of Laura Baumgartner as the acting city clerk to fill a vacancy due to retirement within the office of the city clerk. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item?
I would like to move this. I'd like to move this, and of course, we've given a lot of accolades to Diane tonight, but Laura has been an amazing deputy, and we're lucky to have her continued service, and very happy that she can serve in this capacity. She's proven herself before. And just a note of appreciation, I think the Council Personnel Committee, that we're intimately involved in the search process, knew that Laura's ongoing role and value to the organization was really important. All of us agreed with that, and so, I'm really pleased that she continues and will serve the city in this capacity for a while. Thank you. I'll move it.
Seven yes?
Item forty-seven is the appointment of Kay Simlich as the city clerk to fill a vacancy due to the retirement within the office of the city clerk.
Yeah.
Kay, would you stand up? So here's Kay back here. So, thank you for agreeing to work with us, and we'll look forward to your soon move and occupying of the seat that is now filled by Diane, and know that you've got a very strong supporter sitting up here with Laura, so.
Thank you. I'd like to move that. We're excited, and the whole council interviewed finalist for the position, and Kay's proven herself around the state, and she's dedicated her life to being a clerk, and we're excited to join you. As the mayor says, it was pretty clear tonight you have big shoes to feel. So, we're glad you're here.
Seven yes?
If you'll all allow me, let's do forty-eight. This is approving and amending the twenty-eight E intergovernmental agreement with the Des Moines Water Works as Council Communication Number 19-412. Ms. Manager, did you want to make any quick comment on this?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. And so, this agreement still has just a couple more tweaks left. That's why you'll see in the roll call, that there's allowance given to work out those details between the legal, the two legal entities, our own and the Des Moines Water Works. So, nothing major will change in it. We just want an opportunity to get the language exactly right. I guess I'd only add that I know there's an issue with the meters, so we have an accurate water consumption there, and I would hope before any of these agreements are in place, that that's done. Yes, I can absolutely make sure that that's the case before this is signed and sealed. Okay. I'll move item forty-eight.
Good job, Mayor. Good job, Manager.
Yeah, absolutely.
Seven yes?
Yeah, I want to thank our staff and all of our council members that assisted in this. This was a tough situation, but I think that we reached a resolution that satisfies the zoo, the waterworks, city council, and quite frankly, I think at the end of the day, all the citizens and visitors to the city of Des Moines, and to the zoo. So thank everyone for their work on that. Let's note right now that it's 5:07. Let's quickly move to our hearings, which begin with item fifty-seven. Item fifty-seven is on the vacation of a portion of East Fifth Street Right-Away, lying east of and adjoining 120 East Fifth Street, and conveyance of a permanent easement for building encroachment to the Des Moines Heritage Trust. Timothy Waddell, President, $1,730. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Let's open the hearing and see if there's anyone here that would like to speak on this portion of property off of East Fifth.
I see none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move fifty-seven A and B.
All right.
Seven yes?
Fifty-eight, on the vacation of East West Alley Right-Away, lying north of and adjoining 901 Walnut Street, and leased to the Des Moines Independent Community School District to allow placement of access control gates. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Anyone here to speak to this item?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move fifty-eight, fifty-eight A.
Seven yes?
Fifty-nine. Fifty-nine is on city-initiated request to rezone property in the vicinity of 150 East County Line Road to correct a Scribner's error in the existing limited R161 family low-density residential by amending certain rezoning conditions and the acceptance of rezoning conditions. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver, again, is requested by the applicant, but it requires six votes. So, let's go ahead and open the hearing and see if anyone has any comments about 150 East County Line Road guarding an error, Scribner's error.
I don't see any, Mr. Mayor. Just to thank you to the staff, they corrected this error quickly, and I think Mr. Grubbs ready to go with this, with this property, I think. Right, Eric? Okay. I will move fifty-nine A and B.
Seven yes?
Item sixty is on a city-initiated request to rezone 720, 727, and 730 East Second Street, 827, 861 East Second Street, and 205 to 221 Maple Street, 350 Maple Street, 101 to 284 East Center Street, 832 to 848 East Fourth Street, 225 East Center Street, and 200 Des Moines Street from DR Downtown Riverfront to PUD, Planned Unit Development, and approved Bridge District PUD Conceptual Plan to create a unified PUD zoning district for the previously approved Velocity Bridge District 1, 2, and 3 projects, including 121 existing and future row dwellings within, units within the banks, 243 existing multifamily dwelling units within the Verve and Velocity Buildings, and 114 future multifamily dwellings units within the five-story level building. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the community development director, and it requires six votes. Let's open up the hearing and see if there's anyone here that would like to make any comments.
I don't see any, Mr. Mayor. I know this is another heavy lift for our staff. They've been working with Hubble. If anyone hasn't been able to get down there, there's some serious development going on, and it's, it looks great, and it's filling up, so I'm happy to move sixty A and B. And once again, thank you to our staff for lots of different departments, legal, everyone had a hand in this, so we appreciate your hard work getting this done.
Seven yes?
All right. Item sixty-one, it's on a request from J Larson Homes LLC. John Larson is the officer for a First Amendment to the Three Lakes Estate Phase II PUD Conceptual Plan for property in the vicinity of 3,001 block of East Army Post Road to allow the reconfiguration of the proposed public street layout for development of 80 lots for single-family semi-detached dwellings and 200 lots for single-family dwellings. We'll go ahead and open the hearing and see if anyone is here that would like to make comments on this item.
I see none, Mr. Mayor, but one quick comment I'd like to make, with this type of development going in, in the Greenfield on Army Post Road, and I know we're doing a traffic study right now, we definitely are going to need to look at some infrastructure changes in the CIP for this area. It's a growing area. We've had some serious accidents on that road, and I know that's why Steve is, our engineering, is looking at a traffic study. But this is an area of town that we're able to grow and grow our tax base, but we need to be able to install the infrastructure. There's sewer, but there's not water. There's water, but there's not sewer. Luckily, in this development, we have both, but this is something that we really need to take a look at, and, you know, getting this off the ground and getting it working, and John's going to do a good job. He's did some other developments that some of our model zoning was based off of, was some of the development that he's did in the Eastern Lake area. So, with just those comments, I will move item sixty-one, and we can have further discussion in the CIP about looking at some of that.
Infrastructure.
Mayor, can I make a quick comment?
Please.
I share Joe's enthusiasm. This is a good project, and I hate to be, beat a dead horse, because I've done this before, but this is another project that, when you look at the merits in this neighborhood, and what planning and zoning thought should happen in this spot, the theories and the academics go out the window, and you say, what should the minimums be for a high-quality development like this? For lots that are 65 feet or wider, a two-story house is 1,800 square feet. The developer agreed to this. The neighbors like it. One-and-a-half story is 16, a one-story is 14. These are real projects that, under a new, under the next zoning code, already, we wouldn't have discussion with them or planning and zoning, working with them, to raise it to there. This is a great project, and, again, a testament from some builders, one builder for sure, that the right way to build out some of our neighborhoods, not all of them, is with a higher-quality house, a higher, a larger house, that competes differently. We want families to be able to move up, and, again, this would have had the fast pass, even if these houses were significantly smaller than they are. I point that out because I continue to be a little frustrated with the recommendation from planning and zoning, and the one-size-fits-all small houses in our community. I think we're a community that should have some larger houses, and I'm glad that we have a developer that would agree to those.
I would agree with that also. I think that's the whole process, is that we want a variety, so whoever wants whatever size of house, they can get in Des Moines.
Yes. That is correct. You know, and one of the things I'd like to say, and I think it applies to some other things we're going to listen to tonight, but, you know, I see some neighborhood leaders that are in the room, and I've got to tell you, the strength of our city resides in our neighborhoods, and the input that we continually get from leaders is very, very helpful to us, whether it's at a neighborhood meeting, or it's right here in the city council chamber, or it's in a meeting with staff somewhere else to look at a specific situation. We want to help improve neighborhoods. We want to listen to everybody's hopes and dreams and find ways to do that, and we want to see people's investment in value, while they own that house, continue to appreciate as well as the whole neighborhood.
but this is another project that, when you look at the merits in this neighborhood and what planning and zoning thought should happen in this spot, the theories and the academics go out the window, and you say, what should the minimums be for a high-quality development like this? For lots that are 65 feet or wider, a two-story house is 1,800 square feet. The developer agreed to this. The neighbors like it. One-and-a-half story is 16, a one-story is 14. These are real projects that, under a new, under the next zoning code, already, we wouldn't have discussion with them or planning and zoning, working with them, to raise it to there. This is a great project, and, again, a testament from some builders, one builder for sure, that the right way to build out some of our neighborhoods, not all of them, is with a higher-quality house, a higher, a larger house, that competes differently. We want families to be able to move up, and, and, again, this would have had the fastpass, even if these houses were significantly smaller than they are. I point that out because I continue to be a little frustrated with the recommendation from planning and zoning, and the one-size-fits-all small houses in our community. I think we're a community that should have some larger houses, and I'm glad that we have a developer that would agree to those.
I would agree with that also. I think that's the whole process, is that we want a variety, so whoever wants whatever size of house, they can get in Des Moines.
Yes, that is correct. You know, and one of the things I'd like to say, and I think it applies to some other things we're going to listen to tonight, but, you know, I see some neighborhood leaders that are in the room, and I've got to tell you, the strength of our city resides in our neighborhoods, and the input that we continually get from leaders is very, very helpful to us, whether it's at a neighborhood meeting, or it's right here in the city council chamber, or it's in a meeting with staff somewhere else to, to look at a specific situation. We want to help improve neighborhoods. We want to listen to everybody's hopes and dreams and find ways to do that, and we want to see people's investment in value while they own that house, continue to appreciate as well as the whole neighborhood, and so that, you know, they, they have a good investment, a great place to live, and, and it's consistent with what's going on in the neighborhood, and everybody knows what's going to happen and what the rules are. So, I appreciate everybody's input, not only on this, but here's a specific example of, of, you know, a future project that's moving forward, and we have a real good idea what's going in here, and so should everybody else, as we think and plan for the future. So, having said that, we've all voted, I think?
Seven, yes?
Thank you.
Item 62, on a consideration of a license agreement with 1817 Euclid LLC. Jeff Harcelode is a member for access along a portion of the excess city property located east of and adjoining 1817 Euclid Avenue. Let's open the hearing on this item, again, regarding a license agreement. Anyone here to speak? Seeing none?
I will move item 66.
Thank you.
Seven, yes?
Item 63, on a lease agreement with Koch Brothers, Inc. Richard Koch Jr. is the president for the lease of 81 multi-function devices, printers, copiers, scanner, and facsimile for use in the city operations for a five-year period not to exceed $709,391.22, Council Communication Number 19-408. Let's open the hearing and see if anyone has any comments on this.
I'll move approval of item number 63.
I have young employees that don't know what a fax is.
Did they even know what a copy machine?
I know that this is a one machine.
And I'll be happy to donate 22 cents. I don't understand, they have a bid like that, but 22 cents out of my pocket.
22 cents, could have made me.
Where are you keeping all this change?
I want to know the cup that it's in.
Okay. Item 64, this is on Hartford Avenue Rehabilitation from Southeast 22nd Street to County Soccer Complex Resolution Proving Plan Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, and Engineer's Estimate, and Designating the Lowest Responsible bidder as Wenthold Escavating LLC. Corey Wenthold is President, $643,618, Council Communication Number 19-422. A is approving the contract and the bond. And, before we open this hearing, I, for those of you that have been down there, we've heard from the neighbors around that area that this, this Hartford Avenue Rehabilitation was a real necessity. And I've got to tell you that the, the bid on this is very interesting. It came in significantly under the, under what our estimate was. So, having said all that, let's open the hearing and see if anybody here has any comment on item 64.
I see none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move item 64, and I'm glad that you pointed that out. And 64A. And as a lot of you can see, I don't know if you're following along, but this is paid for by some of the lost proceeds, local option sales tax. So, without that, some of these improvements wouldn't be happening, so this is good for the neighborhood.
Well, it serves a ton of people out there.
Sure does. Hopefully to serve more, as we maybe have some additional fields in that area.
Yep. We have voting in process, but is there anybody that would like to make a comment? All right.
Seven, yes?
All right. Let's note that it's 5:21. We have now completed the hearings, and let's now go back quickly to item 49. These are items, in this case, for second consideration. Item 49 is on a proposed zoning ordinance, planning, and design ordinance, citywide zoning map amendment, and a revision to the Des Moines Municipal Code reflecting adoption. A, second consideration of the ordinance, amending Chapter 134 of the zoning ordinance. B, second consideration of ordinance amending Chapter 135 of the planning and, and design ordinance. C is the second consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 134 of the official zoning map. D is the second consideration of the ordinance amending various chapters of the municipal code to reflect cross-references related to the adoption of proposed zoning ordinance and planning and design ordinance. E is request to speak. Let's go ahead and see if there's anybody that would like to make any comment, and if there are those who would like to speak, we would ask you to step forward at this time.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Jim Ballard, 4007 Southeast 26th Street. I'll be brief. I'll just echo that, put my record, comments from the last meeting into record again, and ask for an emphasis, again, that, that everything we're doing with the zoning is not, does not solve our current challenge with inspections, which is another one of the big impediments that I hear from developers in terms of getting projects done. And I'd also like to just highlight and speak when Mr. Larson's project came up, but he's been very good in the neighborhood. He developed east of the lake, and now the, the one down on Army Post Road, and just proving that you can put a bigger, higher-quality product out in that area, it will sell, there are buyers, and we shouldn't sell ourselves short as a city. We're much bigger than that. I hope we keep saying that to ourselves. Thank you.
I will.
Thanks, Jim.
I know you will.
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor of County, members of council. My name is Mel Pins. I live at 210 East Bundy Avenue in Des Moines, Iowa. And Mayor of County, I might ask if, with your discretion, you could tell Diane not to start the three-minute timer for a second, so I can give her some thanks and accolades from a citizen neighborhood perspective for all of her service in Des Moines. I've served on the zoning board of adjustment for a number of years, and Diane always coordinated all the appointments to the boards and commissions, you know, dozens of boards, commissions, hundreds of citizens. And when I was first appointed, I get this email from the city clerk, and she said, are you the Mel Pins who went to Martinsdale St. Mary's Community School? And I said, there's only one Mel Pins, that was me. Diane and her family are from Martinsdale. Her dad was the superintendent, David Anctil, for many years at Martinsdale St. Mary's Community, and her little brother Phil was in my class. So, they, they lived in the superintendent's house across from the school, and when I hung out with Phil, we'd go in Diane's room and look through her LP collection and spin a lot of her records. And I think it could have been the Eagles, it might have been ACDC, I can't remember. But Diane is...
Long way to top, if you want to rock.
But Diane is a great person from a very good family, and she's proof that kids from little towns can do good things in the big city. So, congrats, Diane. So, it's okay, you can start your timer now.
Charge it, run it.
So, Mel Pins, President of the Somerset Neighborhood Association, Chair of the Zoning Board of Adjustment, and I've served on the steering committee for the Plan DSM, Comprehensive Plan, and the zoning ordinance. I know I spoke before, and I just would like to add to what Councilman Coleman said, and also Jim Ballard, President at Easter Lake, on, on some of those considerations to certainly keep in your review as you look at the second reading. But more importantly, in the press recently, press and media, there were some comments made, I think by a candidate running for council, or running for mayor, that stated that the neighborhoods were not involved in this. This is a surprise to the neighborhoods. Nothing could be further from the truth. This has been a three-year planning process, if not longer, when this started with your consultant. Your city staff, the direction you gave as council, and the work of Mayor of County on this over many years, involve the neighborhoods from square one. People didn't know about this, they either didn't want to care, or they're only caring at the last minute. So, I can't thank the work that the council and Mayor of County have done on this, enough in this process. You have addressed a number of neighborhood concerns with this new zoning ordinance, from how businesses operate in residential districts, to how citizens do participate. And just like was discussed before, we didn't know what quality development we'd get. We just knew in an R-1, you can build a house. What it looked like, how it'd fit in, eh, we don't know. So, there was a lot more angst on that. Now, we have an idea of when somebody's going to build in a neighborhood, generally what we can expect. Houses don't have to look all the same, but they need to be complementary to that zoning district. You've taken into account to allow mixed-use districts, but yet preserve our neighborhoods. There's still a role for citizens. I hope there's still a role for zoning board of adjustment, and I think there is. So, I do want to commend Mayor of County, the council, and city staff on this entire process, and I want to thank Diane. Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thanks, Mel.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Yuland-Hick Walker. I live at 4111 Ingersoll Avenue. I also am a representative tonight of the Des Moines Task Force, Citizens Task Force on Sustainability. I'm going to present an exhibit, is Exhibit A, that came from my classroom, and I want to see if it can be shown on the screen. I added bandages, I ran out of bandages, by the way, but the UN is meeting today for the Climate Action Summit to look at the Paris Agreement that so many, the federal government and states pulled out of, and that many cities are, are still in. And I want to relate this whole thing to the zoning ordinance and to Plan Des Moines. That's why I'm speaking. I put before you the planet model. I'm not sure if anyone, everyone can see it clearly, but it looks like you do. I wanted to point out that there are bandages on Africa there, which is the Sudan and several countries that are suffering drought, and how many of them, small farmers, cannot produce food because of the drought and have, are fleeing their countries. I also want to point out, over, on the, on the bottom there, South America, that the Amazon forests are burning uncontrollably right now, which is the biggest enviro sphere that we have in our planet, and we need to, to correct that. I'm also pointing out to you, down at the bottom, which is the Antarctica, Antarctica is melting faster than anybody ever thought it would melt. And I'm pointing out to you, North, I'm going to go to North America now. Of course, we know about the wildfires of California, and how cities were destroyed and many lives were lost, but I want to go to Iowa, and Iowa, and to specifically, well, Iowa where the flooding is going on on both sides of our state, but also Des Moines, which suffered a flash flood of almost a year, a little over a year ago, and many, many houses were destroyed. I think it's really important that we look at the big picture. I know we're talking about the zoning ordinance tonight, and I want to, first of all, say thank you to Scott for the wonderful op-ed yesterday, which pointed out not only the importance of looking at affordable housing in Des Moines, but also looking at multiple family residents that are going to be put, to revitalize neighborhoods through putting them along corridors where the people can pick up public transportation, as well as go walking and shopping at local businesses and services. So, I, I want to increase that vision right now, tonight, because as, as a member of the task force, I think it's important that we increase the density of our neighborhoods so that we can lower our carbon footprint, but also to, also to retrofit all of our older homes so that they will also lower their carbon footprint, which is all part of a proposed climate action plan that the task force has presented before. And to just kind of give a quick history, I know I'm running out of time, four years ago, we started the task force specifically to go to the city council and to the city staff and ask for a climate action plan. And, first of all, the housing, which is part of the new zoning ordinance and Plan Des Moines, is really a part of the climate action plan, as well as the ordinance that was passed in May, having to do with benchmarking of our big commercial buildings. And then to go further into transportation, we're buying four electric vehicles. I challenged the city council and the city staff to make that 500 in three years. And then we go to growing more food, and I, I came to the, to the zoning commission and asked that we look at the zoning of urban farms, so that we don't transport our, our food 1,500 miles, since we live in some of the best soil in the world, that we start growing our own food and having urban farms, as well as looking at the master plan for forestry that Des Moines has, and has never seriously looked at, which means planting thousands and thousands of trees. I also would like to look at energy use and say, hey, let's go more solar and 100% renewable, look at our green, our infrastructure, and not only emphasize the gray infrastructure, but put money into the green infrastructure, where we catch the rain as it falls. And then finally, the waste. Many, many cities are going to zero waste. I'm asking that, that, in that climate action plan, and we, our, our task force is that we go to zero waste, and we can do it in Des Moines. Anyway, I went beyond just the housing, but I think it's important today with the UN meeting and with the climate strike on last Friday, where over 400, 500 of our youth met at the Capitol, and many people that I know joined that, that we look very seriously at the future and the healthy future that the youth are demanding at this point in time, and that we look at what we can do at the local level in so many ways, including affordable housing.
All right. Thank you, Carolyn.
Mayor of County and members of the City Council, my name's Rick Madden. I'm Madden Construction, 5909 Grand Avenue in Des Moines. At the last public forum, I spoke to you about being the fifth generation of a 100-year-old business here in Des Moines, and I spoke about our commitment to the city of Des Moines and housing affordability. Tonight, I'm going to focus on infill houses. You know, I'm a little bit frustrated, and I'm going to, I'm going to be nice for Coleman here, but, you know, after the last hearing, we got together a group of us who, I think, do a, a large portion of infill houses in the city of Des Moines, and put together some criteria that was suggested that we do, and as of this meeting, we haven't heard anything back as to how those are being handled or even, even looked at, which, I find it kind of troubling that we didn't get that information prior to this meeting. So, I have a few basic but important questions for all of you. First off, the N5 district, as it stands, only allows a House D to be built. So, that's no single-story homes, no ranches. Is that, is that really the way it is? I mean, to me, that seems...
You say no ranches in the N5 district?
That is correct, because it only allows a House D to be built. One-and-a-half story or more. Is that not correct?
We'll get some clarity here. I want to...
We'll get some clarification right behind you.
All right. I appreciate that.
Let's, let's try to do it right now. Let's, let's address it.
Can we take them one at a time?
Okay.
Mike?
Mayor of County, members of the council, Michael Ludwig, Planning Administrator for the city of Des Moines. The code has a Type 1 design alternative available in it, which is a 30% reduction. That applies to the heights as well, so we believe that there's, there's a way to accommodate the one-story construction, whether that's through just an overall reduction in the height administratively, and also through the provision of the half-story requirement that's in the code, which allows an exposed basement to count towards that half-story as well. So, we believe that ranches can be accommodated in that district.
And Mike, would you confirm that most of the houses in that area are not ranches?
Correct.
That's why it was?
That's why this, that's why the, the standard is what it says, but there are relief mechanisms in the code.
All right. And, Mike, don't leave, he may have a, something else.
Yeah. So, that being said, what, 30% of four feet? I don't see how it gets there, and I think plenty of people want ranch houses, elderly handicap. So, that being said, it would need a Type 1 design alternative just to build a ranch home in an N5 district. Secondly, the N3A district allows only a House B. House B requires a 60-foot minimum lot width and 35 minimum building width. There are 50-foot lots all over the city that are, that are in the N3A district. 50-foot lots are very typical for infill houses. The widest house possible in a 50-foot lot with a driveway and, and meeting the sideyard requirements is 30 feet. So, does every single 50-foot lot in the N3A district need to ask for a Type 1 design alternative, just because of the required lot width and minimum building width? I'm assuming it's yes.
I can go get the code and look at that table. I think we've looked at the setbacks in that district, and I'm not certain that the exact measurements that are being quoted are, are, are correct. But, that said, the code does allow Type 1 design alternatives. Those are administratively reviewed by staff as part of the normal review of the site plan, and we believe that the variation in sizes can be accommodated within the code. at the city decide what I need to build in any given neighborhood. I mean, how does a builder purchase land when they don't know what is going to be allowed to be built? And I just showed you two scenarios where I'm coming in for Type 1 exceptions, which is going to happen a lot. So does the person at the city get to decide on the Type 1 alternatives and ultimately what is going to be allowed to be built on these lots? Do they understand the real estate market? Do they understand the risks associated with overbuilding in a neighborhood? Do they know what a buyer's needs and wants are because they pay attention to the housing market? I don't believe that that person will have a solid understanding of those ever-so-important details that go into deciding what houses are to be built in any given neighborhood. Lastly, and probably the most important, is that the zoning code change is going to force each builder doing infill houses to potentially add thousands of dollars of cost to each new home. Some of these forced increases in costs are going to be put in neighborhoods that cannot support those selling prices. So what are you going to do when a house is built per your specs and it doesn't appraise?
So just a quick comment or question?
Sure.
You do realize you can build whatever you want?
With Type 1 exceptions, I do.
You have to go through the same process that you've gone through?
That is not, not true. There was a, if there's a lot of record, I could come in and get a permit and build. There was no stipulations on what I had to build. I didn't have to ask anybody for, you know, requirements on a house, so that is not the case, Council Magado.
Okay.
I don't want to cut you. Were you done?
Yeah, I'm good.
The message I keep hearing from people that are uncomfortable with the zone, Scott, has to do with what I think you are preparing to return with, and it is how, how do we write the criteria and process and kind of the charge of our staff to address the, I'd say that...
The unknown.
The unknown, the exceptions. And, and because there's, you know, worry or concern or distrust or, you know, somewhere in that continuum, as we prepare the amendment, you know, that'll come back in December, I do believe that on some of these issues, the better way to go is to provide, is we're better off trying to err on the side of being unpredictable so that people will risk their own money. You know, the examples that Rick gave last time and this time were all unknowns, and I, I think it's, I think it's, if, I think that we just have to be prepared to explain that where we're going to see the infill development dry up. That has less to do with how many square feet or what's happening, but just the basic design and expectation of houses and, you know, the width of lots and the width of required setbacks and width of houses. Some of them don't match up very well, and I think that we're going to be in a position where there's a whole lot of houses at the beginning that used to go through, you know, without, with the building permit, that's it, that we're going to have to take a look at. And I think we're going to have a couple of years of distrust. So that's all to say that on the neighborhoods that, that he's mentioned, I think we have to be more predictable than we have been before, and I think that's what you're working on, is some statements about how to do that. I don't want to...
To your point, if you might allow me to jump in, you know, you and I changed ideas back in the '90s on some of these issues. Predictability for the neighbors as well as the builders, I mean, everybody has to understand what can be done and how it can be done, because part of this whole discussion is protecting the neighborhoods. They want to know what's going, I mean, they feel and used to feel really uncomfortable when they thought that somebody, a builder, could come in and just do whatever they want, you know, without any rules, and that the neighbors wouldn't understand or, you know, what's going on, and just all of a sudden, one day, a hole gets, you know, picked up in an empty lot, or an infill, or one where a house has been removed, and all of a sudden something appears that, holy smokes, what's this? Why didn't, you know, anybody notify us? So I think it's the predictability for the builders, but also for the neighbors. Everybody has to have some confidence in what we're doing here. So, Mr. Manager, I think that maybe from both sides of this thing, we're trying to be predictable. I mean, our citizens deserve it, and that's been, you know, one of the questions that some people had that Mel pointed out, quite frankly. I mean, we've been working on this now for three years, and that predictability is, to support these neighborhoods, especially on infill.
So part of that predictability, thank you, Mayor, part of that predictability is, we've made it known that staff will review floor plans, house plans, and talk with the developers about what lots and where those would be approved, so that you know that and have that predictability. Also in the code, we've already added more detail on, for instance, the garages, I believe. Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've used terminology that being able to not build a garage or having to build a garage depended on 50 percent of the as-built homes in the area, which is defined as 250 feet. So we're adding that kind of detail, that if, if half the homes have that within 250 feet, then that's the expectation for that home as well. So we're, we're adding that type of definition to character of the neighborhood. So that adds an enormous amount of predictability. So we've done that, I think, in a couple of different cases and use that same language. So we'll continue to look at options. Again, I ask especially the experts that are in this field to propose language like that to us so that we can react, and then it will come down to not every situation is the same, right? And there will have to be discretion, and frankly, there's been nothing denied yet on this code, and so there is going to be an amount of trust. And ask the question, would this be allowed? And we'll respond to that.
How, what kind of timeline? I mean, somebody may put a lot up for sale, and you need to buy it. So, you know, you, right now, we know what the rules are, so we can, we could buy that without even talking to anybody at the city. So are we talking a day? Are we talking a week? Those are criteria that I...
So again, it depends on if you've already talked to us about the floor plans and say, this is House Plan Number 6, because then our staff become aware of that, and they have those on file so that they can quickly check that. So if you're willing to work with us in providing that type of detail, it will speed things up enormously.
Well, there's, I'm trying to be patient and have a lot of trust, but it's scary. And, you know, I...
This is a bold move.
Huge change. It's a bold move, and I know every neighbor loves to see a bigger, more expensive house come up in the neighborhood. Nobody's going to say, boy, I wish that house was smaller. So that's just something that any neighbor is going to say, yeah, we want bigger, better quality.
I would disagree with that, because you built, you built some quality homes in neighborhoods that fit in perfectly. So I would disagree...
Yeah, but nobody wants less in their neighborhood. Nobody wants a smaller footprint. I mean, yeah, we do, and the values are...
But you built the footprint that you have, and I've watched you do it. You do a good job at it, and you should be proud, and we're proud that the infill that you do do. But I don't, I don't think that's ever, ever been, you know, that the infill needs to be so much bigger than what's around there. It needs to fit into the neighborhood and have, you know, similar size, and I think you do a fair job with that. I don't, I don't think that that's ever been a question. And so we want to make sure that you can continue down that path, and however we need to do this through this parallel path, which will be completed on December 16th, then that's what we need to do. But the code doesn't go into effect until when, Scott?
December 15th.
Yeah. So, and we'll have this other parallel track on December 16th pass, so, I mean, if a house, you said the question, if a lot comes up for sale, but you can still buy it right now.
No, I know, but I have to have answers on, on what's allowed there, so.
Okay. Scott?
You know, I keep hearing trust, but it's going to be hard for me to keep voting for this ordinance when I don't know what the future's going to hold. And we've heard from NFC, you know, we talk about infill lots. Has anybody ever, I've never gotten a call from any neighbor saying, oh, I don't like what they've built, what Habitat or Madden or anybody at NFC. I've never heard anybody say, oh, I don't like what they've built. I don't understand why we're insisting to keep saying, well, the city, you know, we can do a 30 percent allowance, to not build a one-story home. I mean, we talk about housing affordability and aging in place. Many people need that. They need that, you know, zero-entry, one-story home, and they're happy to do that if they can stay in their neighborhood. So it bothers me why we're saying, well, don't worry about it because we have a 30 percent. Why, why not just allow it right now? Let them keep building what they're building? You know, I think we were all sent emails, I think it was NFC, I don't know if they're in the room or not, but, you know, they've built some houses, and they've made them a little bit bigger, made them nice, and they're not selling them. They're not selling them. They've got houses that have been on the market for over a year. So how can we expect any builder, you know, we tout that we're doing this blitz on blight, we're going to take out all these houses, and then you're going to have all this vacant land, and these guys aren't going to want to build there. NFC, I mean, they're scared. They've got houses that have been there for a year, and they have it sold. So we got to be real careful. If we want our city to grow, then we need to be responsive to these infill lots.
If I could, there's several questions in that, but the main one here is, this is about the fast track and entitlements and preserving the character of the neighborhood. So now visualize a neighborhood that has three-story, single-family homes, maybe the Victorian area.
Where is that?
Sherman Hill.
Ninth Street.
Larger, larger homes, even let's say two-story with two and a halves, whatever. Larger-built homes. We have several areas throughout our city that have those higher structure.
We're all aware of every neighborhood in Des Moines.
Would it be appropriate to entitle the opportunity to build a ranch home in the middle of nothing but larger homes? I hope the answer is no, because that's what I've been told in the past.
I don't think they would want to.
That's fine.
It wouldn't sell. It wouldn't appraise. You couldn't do it.
So yes, we have had complaints about houses built within infill. It may not have been, and I've told you that, it was not, but we have had those complaints by other builders. And so we do have to recognize the integrity of the existing neighborhoods. And by entitling the ranch in any neighborhood, that would be a mistake. It needs to be thoughtful. It needs to be consistent, and the better builders are doing that, but you can't entitle everyone.
I got a, I got a comment and a request, actually, probably two requests, Mayor, if I can. Rick mentioned a communication that several people came together. I would like to see the city get back to him, and if you could, Scott, maybe share with us their communication and your response.
Sure.
I acknowledge that, especially on the infill developments, this is like a crazy Rubik's Cube of, you know, you know, we can do this here and do that here. So sometimes I don't, I don't have quick access to all the information to sort through the, well, that neighborhood is only two and a half or three-story houses, that kind of stuff. So your response would be, I think, the right gesture there. With regards to like that N-5, I've, I wanted to ask for this, and I keep, I keep forgetting. It would help me to have a map, a series of maps, where only N-5 is on there, so that's the only thing lit up and colored.
Yeah, so each one has, each category.
And then NX2 has its own map, so that we can kind of easily look at, because I get lost in the many shades of green and yellow on there.
I do, too. I can't tell them.
And I know that will, that would be, you know, significant work, but I think it will probably prove useful so that when we're talking to Rick or somebody else about an N-5 district, we can say, well, where in here would you really build a ranch, you know, where it's appropriate? The current map we have is really important and useful for some, you know, research and discussions, but it's, it's also not helpful when it comes to that particular example as we try and differentiate the zones. So is that something we could get, you think?
And I don't know if we could put it on, you know, I have one like that for my, just my ward, but that's difficult to carry around and to get out. I mean, it would be nice to have it.
But aren't we even changing some of these zones, like over in Ward 2?
Through the amendment process.
Through the amendment.
Yeah, but that won't happen until after we pass the zoning code.
Parallel.
Correct?
End of the year.
One day after.
That was what was requested.
I think we need to see that. I think everybody needs to see it so everybody's really comfortable.
So actually, I would have to ask Mike if you think that we can turn on the different district in a map and print those.
Yeah, it would be a series of about 28 maps for, to cover each of the zoning districts so we could give you a packet.
Did you ever have the game as a kid where you could like hit a button and only certain states would light up?
Each, the maps, the districts are in layers, so we can produce a packet of maps.
And I'm fine with a wood map, but I want to see what the proposed, what the zoning, and you've sent me something that was marked, but I want to be able to see it.
Our intent is to provide that, the workshop that you have on the schedule. We have that, that plan for the workshop that you received the calendar meetings from Scott on, so that's where we propose to provide that. Would the maps be appropriate for that workshop, or do you want those ahead of time?
It'd be great to have them ahead of time, but I know we're asking for a lot.
Can you put it on, I mean, bigger sheets than eight and a half by 11, but not extremely big, you know? I mean, and just make it almost like a book-type deal.
30 percent variation? One thing I just wanted to clarify is, right now, and Rick, I know we've worked with you a number of times, but there've also been a lot of projects that have had to go to the Board of Adjustment for your projects, and I would point out that the need to go to the Board of Adjustment is essentially going way under this code for your project. So it allows a lot of smaller lots by right versus 60-foot being the minimum under our current code. So, you know, while you have been able to do some by right, you've also had to go to the Board of Adjustment a lot of times, and we've tried to make this process more convenient and keep that within staff or administrative realms versus having to go to a public hearing. So we'd be happy to sit down and go through each district specifically with you if you'd like, I'd be more than happy to do that. We'd be happy to get you the maps that you want.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, too.
Yeah.
Because it sounded like it was like you could go buy any lot anywhere and didn't have to use to build a house. So I'm glad we had clarification on that.
Typically, we knew, we knew what the rules were, and we knew if it was going to have to go to the Board of Adjustment or not, so.
But whether the Board of Adjustment would approve it or not, I mean, did they always...
Yeah, that was a gamble. What we knew going in, we knew it based on prior times and how will it fit in the neighborhood. Five percent of the time, I'd say, maybe four to five percent of the time, we'd have to go to the Board of Adjustment.
What is that timeframe if you have to go to the Board of Adjustment? So if you would...
At least 30 days.
90 days?
At least 30 days.
Yeah, it depends when you apply.
Okay. That's why I'm just curious, just to say, this could be advantageous to you in some regards and others not, so.
Yeah. Well, Mayor County, members of the council, this is, it means a lot to me, you know, this, we've been doing this a long time, and I want to work with you, but I also want to make sure we get it right so that people don't stop building affordable houses, ranches, whatever they want in the city. And you get quality homes. You don't just want the rules to build a house, and we're not getting quality homes in this city. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this proposed zoning code states admirable general intentions to preserve the sustainability and livability of our neighborhoods, as well as our property values and aesthetic appeal of our city. That's Section 135, 7.1.1. Further, you express a desire to increase the tree canopy throughout the city. My question would be, why allow unwise development to greatly reduce tree canopy, increase runoff from roof, driveway, parking areas, just to then turn around and require tree canopy to put back on? Doesn't it make good common sense to, sorry, to require preservation of existing tree and other natural vegetation, which is slowing the runoff of water? and other natural vegetation which is slowing the runoff of water? Unwise development of naturally forested sites will cause the city greater expense to repair and expand the already overwhelmed storm drainage system. So I previously wrote to several of you about a specific property, but I just believe that we're missing some things, and maybe it ties in with a previous discussion about, don't the neighbors have some interests, a great interest in what happens adjacent to their property? The one property I'm using as an example is three sides surrounding this over one acre wooded, it's never been developed, as far as I can tell. Mature trees over the whole thing. And didn't those people buy that property in part because, oh, look, I have a, I have a wooded area right in my backyard. Every one of them around three sides, and then the fourth side is a recreational trail. I always assumed it was part of Beaverdale Park, until I saw the for-sale sign go up. And so I just think that there should be some, maybe microzoning, that would also let people know who might try to acquire this property, that it's really not very So, I don't know. And then, I know that apparently you have no, no fund to acquire property for public benefit, but I suggested the possibility of maybe the state revolving fund, which is used to protect water quality even in agricultural areas, but why not in an urban area, too? So I encourage you maybe to consider that, maybe some amendments to your zoning code, that it may be at too large of a scale, and that, you know, I agree with some of what I heard about, you know, people deserve notice when development is gonna occur in their neighborhood that might affect their property value. I mean, a lot of people say, well, we need to, we need to increase the property value, the tax base. You could, you could decrease the property values of all the surrounding people more than you by allowing unwise development. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Timmy.
I think I brought enough, if you wanna pass this around. Adam Grubb, 935 66th Street.
Well, you're starting, I'll move to receive and file.
Thanks.
Oh, I'm glad to say hi.
Hi.
Thank you, Adam.
Adam Grubb, 935 66th Street, West Des Moines. Before I jump into this, I guess I wanna share a thought, kind of as I was sitting in line, listening to things. I feel like one of the, one challenge of this zoning is really defining what success looks like. And it is certainly a balance, you know, striking a balance, we hear a lot about sort of the neighbors versus a market demand, is a lot of what I hear is, is how do we really strike a balance? How do we strike a balance in product type, price point, meeting the wishes of the neighbors, but also having an ability to meet the vast market demand? The sense, as the President of the HBA, the overwhelming sense that I've gotten from our membership is, has been somewhere probably between, I feel like a lot of the folks that are in the conversation feel unheard. I think they felt unheard throughout the process in terms of their experience, their market awareness, and their input. And I do think that there have been strides in a better direction, but when I spoke last time, I talked about cooperation and collaboration. And I think a lot of the fear or the mistrust is stemmed from really their, a lack of relationship, and not having a vision of what success looks like. So I don't know that there's clarity as really where we're necessarily trying to go, but we have a tool that we're gonna sort of measure where we're going, but the end of what success looks like isn't there. And I think that's the challenge, is to really define that, build that relationship with our membership, and offer that clarity, and, and find a way to not only have the neighbors feel heard, but have the industry and the home builders feel heard. I don't think they feel heard, and I think that's an overwhelming sense that I've gathered in my time in this, and I wanna try to help be a part of that solution. I know we're making strides in the right direction, but as I'm in line, I think that's a big part of the disconnect. With that, one thing I do wanna point out also, I believe there is, is demand. There's sort of the argument that, hey, we've only gotten the entry-level price point, we haven't gotten much of the, of the higher-end price point. I know Easter Lake, I think it's, of course, I'm gonna draw a blank, Lakeview Estates. The Larson did over, off Porter. I'm going off my head, but I'm, I'm in the general trend. They put in 54 lots, that first year, I think they sold 15, and 2018, they sold seven, and this year, I think they've only sold three or four. The builders have about 23 lots that they own, and the developer still has 23 lots left. So again, while I agree there is a demand, it's the balance of that demand at that price point that is the risk the developer is taking. And when they're making their equations in that pro forma, they're saying, hey, what's the takedown in this? And the challenge is, is to go in and acquire a piece of ground, buy, you know, 30 acres, put in 54 lots. It requires a lot of cash, typically a lot of money from the bank and a personal guarantee. And, and so I think it's about striking a balance between sort of the inventory and the, the actual demand rate. And the data that I saw in Easter Lake, 'cause I agree completely, I think there is a demand. I think that there's a lot of folks that live in the city of Des Moines that wanna stay in their area and be able to move up. The question is, is how many? And the question is, what price point is that? And I think we just wanna be a greater part of that discussion, 'cause that's what we're really, really good at. And I think Easter Lake, while it gets pointed at as an opportunity for that demand in that kind of a neighborhood, but there was a pent-up demand in the beginning of 15 homes, and then seven, and now I think it's only three or four. Another thing worth noting, the most popular plan in there was about a 1,500-square-foot ranch. It was selling at 275. That house now is 292. It's been sitting on the market for three times as long, and it has a $6,000 price reduction or incentive on top of the price. Exact same house they were selling two years ago, and now it's gone up 15,000, sitting on the market three times as long, and the sales are down 150%. So again, I think it's about finding a balance, and we wanna be part of that discussion and helping to find a balance, and we wanna meet that demand that is there. So those were my in-line thoughts. May I continue?
Counsel?
Yes.
Give him a couple more minutes.
He's President of the HBA.
I have, I have two things for your consideration. You know, one of those, one of the things that you have, and I wanna put this, I think this would be sort of the top, the top one. So in the N2 district, this is a two-story, Mike, can I get clarification? Is it 33% stone or 35-ish?
Thirty-three.
Sorry. And maybe Scott, you can speak.
N2 Type A.
Okay, so for single-family residential, it's one-third masonry on the dwellings, just as we've approved as part of zoning conditions for the last 10 years on single-family.
On the front.
Yep. And then once you get around on the backside of the dwellings, it's, can be 100% vinyl, there's no requirement on the sides or the rear of a single-family dwelling.
May I ask, either. So would this be, so would this gable be considered? Are we able to zoom in on that a little bit?
We got it all in front of us.
You got it? Would that gable be part, would that be included in that takeoff?
Yeah, we exclude outdoors, windows and garage doors from that calculation, and then the remainder of the facade is considered part of the facade, and we calculate the third of the balance.
So even with that decorative gable, that is not part of, you still have to include that, right?
It's still siding material on the facade, but again, we exclude the windows, the doors, and the garage doors from the facade calculation, and calculate the percentage from there.
And this is what we discussed last time. So that gable, even though it may be like shake shingle or whatever they use, you're saying that that would be included in the 33%?
That would be included in the total facade measurement, less the building, windows, doors, and garage doors. And then we would take whatever that square footage was, times one-third, to get the percentage of the square feet of masonry that would be required on the front of the dwelling.
And what is the porch exception?
We also allow, if there's a 60-square-foot porch on the dwelling, that they can, it's an option. They can either do the masonry, or at least a 60-square-foot porch. So again, these are, the provisions in the code are exactly the same as what we've approved on rezonings for single-family housing for the last 15 years in Des Moines. We're applying it exactly the same under this code as we have under zoning conditions.
Okay, Adam?
Yep. I think much of the single-family that's being built in the city is in a PUD. This is, what you're looking at would be 33% of the front facade. The only other place that I could really find...
Wait, wait, let me ask you. So 33%, so this is, it shows 33% without the gate, without the gable, so what...
No, that's with, with the gable, that's thirty, that is 33.
Okay, okay, I just need a little clarification there.
Yeah, that's a 33% stone takeoff right there. I guess, and this is something that we've built, this is probably one of our best-selling floor plans in Carmen Estates, which is in a PUD. I would, I would offer that the market is at something more of like a Wayne's Cot stone on that garage column. Which is basically like this, right? So I'm not offering that we don't do stone, I'm certainly not saying that, but what I am offering is that 33% stone on a two-story, this is grossly out of touch with the market. And also, then, if you look at a ranch...
So, and the reason is, it pushes the price?
Yeah, it adds, I mean, you go from anywhere, it does. I mean, it's just, it's a price point driver. Now, our experience, just, I guess what I would offer is, most folks, if they're gonna have three, $2,000 to $4,000, they're gonna use that on the interior in some fashion, more often than not. Where we start to see folks really start to increase that stone level, I would offer this in a new district would make more sense. It would be more in line with the marketplace. But in an N2 Type A, I think this is grossly out of line with the market, specifically to the two-story, because it is just more front, so it's a higher percentage, where the ranch is what you see there. So what I wanna show you with the ranch...
So just going back, what do you, what do you have on that gable? What type of siding is that? What is it?
So it's a vinyl shake. I mean, it's a shake material, which would be another consideration that I think would be relevant, is that, to see that as a design alternative. There's a couple things that I think are worth digging into, sometimes, and you can see up here on the ranch, so the second one is gonna be off of the roof. So if that's part of my takeoff, the first thing I'm gonna do is remove it.
Yeah, no, I see.
And if the second one is part of the takeoff, I'm gonna hip the roof, and I'm gonna remove it.
We're gonna have all kinds of, just hip roofs and no peaks, and it's gonna be...
I think that'll be the path of least resistance.
Playing Janu on the outside.
So what, so I'll make it two points. I think one would be, I'd offer, if you had, to have an ability to have some verbiage, that a shake or a board and batten would be a design alternative that would be taken away from that lap siding.
And I think that's what my point was at the last meeting, that we were trying to get through, that there are other things besides stone that would dress this up. I could find some pictures, I mean, I see houses all the time that have something decorative on that gable that's nice.
Yes.
But it's not as expensive as the stone.
So ironically, this is in, this house just got approved to be built, and the basement got dug, and I hope this doesn't backfire on me. But I would say this ranch looks really nice, and I think this would be sort of the hope and the intent. Based on the digital calculations that we did, and I double-triple-checked these today with our drafts woman, I believe that stone to be 20% of that front facade, which with a type one at 30% of the 33%, would need a type two to be able to build that home as it currently is.
How much stones on this, front of this house?
54 square feet of a total of 254, so it's 54 and a half out of a total 254, and then the garage gable 75.
It's 20%.
And the small gable. Now, ironically, and I think it might have been sort of a look-feel thing, the way that it got approved, but if you take out the gables, which it ends up being 168, I believe, it's like 32.3% of the front facade is stone, without the gables. So...
I, can I, can I jump in here?
Yeah.
Scott, on the, on the point that he's making, are we, are we in a position, we're not in a position to address it on our action tonight, because it's a significant change, but in the amendment, there, we could...
You can still make changes, it's just I would have to figure out how severe they are within the code, and how much public input is necessary, quite frankly.
I mean, we're gonna have three hearings here, that's...
I understand.
A lot of input.
Fifteen years of history, though, is what we're working with, so I wanna make sure that we're respectful of that. And I think some of the enlightening conversation we have had is, the council needs to understand what else is being built in the metro area, 'cause it is one market, one opportunity. And so some of what you were sharing with me is the product that's out, out and about in other areas.
Right, the public community.
Because you need to know that, because, again, it's the market we're trying to get a balance with, and it's the whole market, not just...
And I think, and I said this last time when we were talking about the project on East Tubal, the, the underlying, the premise of the whole discussion is that brick dresses it up and makes it more visually appealing. I'm not quite sure, in like my opinion, brick far outweighs having gables there. In fact, if I were to say, would I rather have a house with 33% brick, or would I rather have it with 20% brick with the gables? I think it, I think it makes it a more substantial house, prettier, and as near as I can tell on the ranch that you put here, those, that, there's no window, that's not an addition of a bedroom or anything, it's to dress it up architecturally.
Yeah.
Chris, I can tell you that buyers, they really don't care about the brick. Some brick is fine, but what sells is to have that gable dressed up. And some of the builders are doing different colors, and I, you know, I could, I could send, send everybody pictures, but most buyers, I mean, they drive by a house and they see something with the gable that's dressed up, and they like that.
Right.
They like the look.
I don't, yeah. I, I don't, I don't want it to be an either-or, but what I would like to do is make sure that we don't set ourselves up where everybody comes in with the basic roof with no gables in order to meet all the other regulations and to keep it in a price point. And I think what we've heard from builders on infill or greenfield is, that's gonna be an unintended consequence of what we're doing. And so I'd like to be real predictable, but put value into that gable, just like we put value... Just like we put value into the brick. But I don't think the house is worth very much, in most people's minds, if you take those two gables away and you left it at 33% brick. I think it's a plain. It's a, yeah, it's a 1948 war house.
But as you, as you, I will offer, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, so what you're saying is if we do the amendment, if it's sizable, that you, you could do a combination, it's not stuck to the 33, if you do something in the gable.
That's what I'd like to say.
Okay, just want to clarify on that. So you have an option, but you're not going to just put nothing.
Or the gable has to be treated with a higher-level siding or something unique. Which I think, I think is what you drew here, that if we could, if, if you.
So what are those design, what are those different designs and different materials that we would substitute in the gable that would fit in, that's going to, that's going to pop in the neighborhood?
Yeah.
So the neighbors aren't going to be upset, you know, because they, you're, we've had 15 years of experience of this that we're, you know, we've, we've got to change with the times and now's the time. So tell me, talk, talk through some of the, the materials that we're talking about. And how durable are they?
Yeah, I, I guess on the, on the, on the 15 years, I would, I don't, I believe the majority of single-family homes are being built in a PUD. And I don't know that on the whole, that this would be the norm under 300. I spent about an hour today going through, there's about 1,600 current listings and about 800 of them are under 300,000. And this picture was the, the whole metro. Yeah, new construction, the whole metro, 16, about 1,600.
How much of that is in Des Moines?
Oh, there was 80.
80?
Yeah.
So you got 1,600 and you got 80 in Des Moines?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and of the homes under 300, this, this was the most stone by far. In a new district, I think it's a relevant number. I think 33 is a good number. I really do. I think when you get into 350, that buyer expects more stone. I think they want that. The challenge is, is if we are going to strike a balance, it's trying to find that balance from 250 and 300 and continue to meet the demands of those buyers. This home would need a type two. The challenge becomes, I guess what I would offer is we have, we have.
Why does this need a type two?
Currently.
Because of its.
Because it would be outside of the 30%, right? So let's say we remove the gables, it's at 33%, right-ish. What, the challenge is though, is again, it's sort of the trust factor on the type ones. So if you look at our neighborhood, where we build our own homes, probably a third of our homes have a full-front porch. A full-front porch would, would cover that. There's another third that we would put more stone to be able to offer a design alternative to the, to the streetscape. But there is a third that is trying to hit that price point that would be significantly outside of the 30%. Like I, like I showed you on the two-story, it would probably be more something in line of having like a stone Wainscot on the face. And, and every builder in their base, like the base price in the base house that's going to be built throughout the entire metro, at a minimum, is going to have that Wainscot height stone on the garage column. And so I think in the alternative path, to sort of set this conversation aside, I think we'd like to continue to be a part of the cooperation and conversation and find the right balance between something that would be a fast path and could also get some type ones to really truly get some of that balance in the neighborhood, to meet some of the entry-level demand, and then also have some really nice looks here in the type A N2 house. So then with that being said, I want to show you, then if you look at the top one. So this, this one's a little trickier to see. So really truly, one of our, our best-selling, one of our best-selling products is a four-unit townhome, really an empty nest, yes, please. Would be like an empty nester buyer. Is my three minutes up yet? I didn't hear that bell go off, sorry. On this, okay, so really quick, this is 40%. This adds $11,000 retail cost per unit on a $180,000 unit. So anything above three units on up is categorically the same. Scott and I have started conversations and I would just continue to urge this remain part of the zoning discussion, that this be part of the alternative path, that we strike the right balance on a fast path for a multifamily to meet that missing middle and also have an ability to meet that market demand. This is what the 30% would look like, and this cuts the cost again about 30%, so still about 7,000 a unit. And then this is what we're doing currently. So there is a Wainscot across the face. This would actually probably meet the type A requirement to the front facade. And then as you can see on the sides, we do have some wraparound. And then on the back, you have some more gables. I would propose that in this, I don't know if it'd be a new district or a type of housing in that district for a three-to-eight unit multifamily. But there's certainly a missing segment and it would be defined by the materials in that. So I, I think the finishes for an apartment should be categorically different than for three-to-eight units and different than, say, a single-family. I think there could be consideration for public areas versus private areas, so that where there was public-facing part of the building, say on the side, if that's the side that you drove in, I think there can be some consideration for making that, you know, look appropriate or having some stone or some windows to that side. But again, I would offer really, ultimately, my two points, really long-winded, are the type A, to have some further consideration on a better balance of the stone requirement to the type A housing in N2 district. And then we can offer a different balance in, in what we would consider the new district. And then on the multifamily, that we have either a district or a housing type that would address that missing middle. I am aware that the tax abatement does not comply with the vinyl at that. But I would just urge that we address this in the zoning discussion. And then when we get to the abatement dialogue, that we can address it then. But I think that's going to be a key component to meeting some of that affordable housing and that missing middle is adding density. I think there's just some further work to be done to be, find that right balance. And .042 vinyl would be appropriate in that, I think the .044 is a sales, I did look into that further. And I, and I do really strongly believe that to be a sales technique and a sales and marketing color thing for that. And, and I think specifically to the single-family in that, that three-to-eight housing, missing middle townhome. So thank you for your time.
Three minutes up. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Lance Henning, Greater Des Moines Habitat Humanity, 2200 East Euclid. And I do want to just say thank you for your partnership and support that, just as reminder on the partnership with the City of Des Moines, has created many Habitat affordable homeownership opportunities. It's been the city's direct partnership with Habitat through the tax sale process, waiving city liens on vacant properties, selling vacant properties to Habitat, utilizing CDBG, utilizing Home, and many more indirect partnership activities that have been important for us creating 250 homeownership opportunities over the last 10 years. And also glad to share that these quality homes for the homebuyers have reduced utility bills, created stability, and allowed families to build equity and wealth. Homeownership does remain the number-one way that Americans build wealth. And your partnerships, four families talked at the hearing on September 9th. And all those families have seen appreciation in their homes from 18% to 55% since they purchased their Habitat home. So all that's happening together, so thank you. Also thank you for the work that has been going on, on the zoning and the changes. It is making it possible for more residents to have access to homeownership on the changes that have been made. I do want to highlight a couple of things on the bigger picture and, and then I would echo some comments on, on the uncertainty. That on the bigger picture, the housing affordability lift in front of us as a community is a big lift. The workforce housing study confirms housing is a big issue for this community. It'll take everyone involved in the housing development and all levels of government working together. And the issues around housing affordability means that we need meaningful discussion and we need action in the near future. And that action should be around a comprehensive and balanced affordable housing strategy. It's something that we don't have in this community today. Our community strategies need to include the maintaining, improving existing housing stock. And I know you guys have been talking about that. And that's keeping the folks that are already in houses, keeping them there and improving those. And it's increasing the housing supply. This is about creating housing that doesn't exist today. So Habitat's concerns have been and will remain focused on the cost of home and any kinds of regulations that are adding to that cost without a benefit back to the resident. An important strategy to the cost of home is increasing the housing supply. And so different aspects to be able to make that happen are removing barriers to develop market-rate housing, increasing the housing affordability in resource-rich areas, and incenting more housing types in more areas. Affordable housing advocates, all through this process and discussion, have continually said we are for increasing the housing supply. We are for more houses, more types of housing, and having housing in more places. Again, there have been some changes in the proposed code and there are more clarity in some areas that we are thankful for. We look forward to the continued discussions and cooperation to work through the uncertainty. And as Mr. Madden had mentioned, that we did put together some specifics. And if those are in writing, we haven't seen them yet, but those are things that we hope are coming in writing on there. So it's pieces around how we count the square footage, pieces around the garage. And I think there's been different questions too, is when someone comes and asks for more one, more than one exception, what's going to happen on there? And is it going to be possible to get more than one exception? So these are things that are still uncertain and trying to figure out on there. And when there is clarity, you can make the decision and move forward in where you're going to invest. And just an example that happened the other week, and I shared that with Scott, is the maps are out on where things are happening for the proposed zoning. We had a donor call us, said, hey, we'd like to give you a lot that is currently zoned residential. We looked on the maps, the zoning is changing, it won't be residential in the future. It was easy for us to decline that. There was clarity. It was easy to move forward and, and make the right decision on if we should be taking and investing in that in the future. So we do look for the continued discussions and cooperation and getting things in writing that will help with areas of uncertainty. And we look forward to Des Moines' leadership and partnership. We need it for being able to both create that certainty for the investment and to be able to be looking at a comprehensive and balanced affordable housing strategy. So we thank you.
Thanks, Lance.
Hello, my name is Amy Plymat. I lived for 20-plus years at 1342 39th Street in Des Moines, and I still own that property. But I moved to Johnston in an acreage setting because I'm a market gardener. So, but I still own the property on 39th Street in Des Moines, which is an upstairs-downstairs duplex. And while our neighborhood was not a cookie-cutter neighborhood, built with all the homes the same style, it had a couple of big houses, a couple of two-story houses. It's had infill of, of modern side-by-side duplexes. And there are little houses along the street, so it's a mixture of housing. I understand that in Union Park areas or certain parts of the city where there are two-story homes, one after another, built in the 30s or 20s or 40s, that building a ranch might seem to be not in keeping with the neighborhood. I think a lot of times, a house that gets built, as long as it keeps in, it has in keeping with the style of the housing, if it's craftsmen, if it has pillars and, and big overhangs and, and looks cute, looks like the other homes, that a, that a ranch house, which is desirable for a lot of older people and even younger people, for, and handicap accessibility, that sort of thing, it, it does make it a less expensive home. And, you know, the, the census in 2017 suggested that Des Moines' median income is about $50,000. And that was in 2017. And MLS data shows there's a sort of a massive shortage of homes priced less than $200,000 for resale in the Des Moines area. And when Habitat builds a house, they cost about $150,000 to build it and then they sell it, it's sold for an appraised value of $140,000. So, I mean, that, that's a lower-priced home. And so the idea of, of requiring things, I'm glad you guys reduced the, the requirement of a certain square footage of 1,400, it's less now, and I don't know what, what it is now, but, and I'm glad that you, you know, didn't make it mandatory that there had to be a basement. The Habitat homes have a partial basement. The one-car garage as a mandatory feature is something that I know that the article in Sunday's paper suggested, his comment suggested it would keep clutter out of the yards and it would make the homes be, have a higher resale value. But I don't, you know, garages can be added at a later date. And initially, being able to get someone into a home and stabilize so that they're not at the edge of homelessness is important. And the Alice study, which was prepared for the City of Des Moines and suburbs, said that one of the key findings, it said, was that 58,000 households in the Des Moines metro area are cost-burdened. They're spending more than 30% of their income on housing. And, you know, that's, that's a big issue, especially, I know the city's trying to help with homeless, do more for homeless populations and try and take care of that situation. But when you have a more expensive entry-level home, then it's just one more area away in which people aren't able to, to buy a home. And I agree that having multifamily buildings with, along transit routes and things like that are an important thing. But one, and I don't agree that the idea of a, of a home, a single-family home, without, you know, frills and maybe even a garage, would not, would not rise in value. Because historically, I mean, other than the debacle in 2008, historically, having a home with land, with a lot, does raise in value. In fact, people can build a garage or improve the property. And there's people who want to have a dog or, and especially a lot of immigrants are, are interested in growing their own food as a, as a form of, you know, trying to earn their living and, you know, keep their, their costs down. So now, in my neighborhood on 39th Street, like I said, there's a lot of different kinds of houses. And they, most of them, except for the infill duplex, which still looked good with all the other homes, there are a lot of different sizes of homes. And I think as long as you're taking like craftsmen or, you know, the same styles, that that will be in keeping. And I don't agree that, that neighborhoods for infill housing, somebody was talking about the idea that infill housing, that neighbors don't want to see a smaller home, they want to see something bigger. I don't agree with that at all, because what happens is you get an infill house built that's bigger, more expensive, nicer, newer. I think the neighbors see that as, well, who are they? So anyway, I think smaller homes going in make, like NFC is having problems selling homes they built. I think if they were less expensive, they probably would get sold. So infill housing, I don't think has to cost more or be larger. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy.
Well said.
Yeah.
Diane, thank you for your commitment to the city. As a two-time resident, we do appreciate it. The little things are noticed and it's very uncommon in today's world to see someone with that kind of dedication. So.
Thank you.
Good job. And I'm not trying to butter you up because I'm not going to go over three minutes, so. I am, I'm Dan Knopf with the Home Builders Association in Johnston. But we're celebrating our 75th year of being part of this fantastic community. So thank you, Mayor, and council members. I'm just going to kind of sum up a little bit on behalf of our members, if you don't mind. So sum's a little repetitive. Scott, your team, you guys, we've had a lot of continued great dialogue. So thank you, we appreciate that. And I want to apologize on Rick's behalf. He asked me right before we walked in the door, he says, do we have any new updates? Do we know the conversations we've had, that piece of paper that you referred to that you wanted him to forward on? We have had a lot of good dialogue. But I told Rick, I said, no, I, we don't have any new updates, just because we, we really don't. We've had so many conversations, we've, we've had too many, right? Think about Mike and Aaron and their, how many have they been part of, right, as part of this? Scott, you know, so it'd be good for us to have that encapsulated. Scott, you know, so it'd be good for us to have that encapsulated somewhere, documented on paper, just so we know, right? That little piece about the 50/50 within 250-foot radius, you know, I know that conversation took place, and I know we kind of came to terms, but we don't know that it truly exists. And until it gets voted on by this council, we don't know that it's official. So I apologize. That was a direct question in the lobby. I didn't know that that was something that was beyond conversation level, and until we see it, we don't have a way to know that. So I would ask, you know, we've talked about a lot of things. We've talked about square footages, we've talked about garages, we've talked about all kinds of zoning changes, a parallel path. But we don't really know how much is dialogue and how much of it is in motion, right? So it'd be great for us, that House Plan Six example you used earlier, I love that, right? If they can bring that in, and we've got the stone determined and the details in the gables, hey, let's stamp House Number Six and they can move on. That way, they know that predictability is imperative. They know that they can buy that lot, because they can put House Number Six on it, and House Number Six sells every time they do it. So please, if you can continue with that. We've also talked about defining the process and actually kind of having a parallel path of the fast track compared to the others. So that way, it's very visual. And I know your team's working on it, and I know that they're overwhelmed. We've had that conversation. So if you can keep that on their radar, in fact, all of this, you know, we're right at the, we're at the finish line. Three years, I know you said that earlier, Mayor, I think it's probably longer than three years if we ask some of the people fully engaged in it. But let's press through and let's get this thing done, and let's not let it just continue to drag on and drag on. Because that's, that apprehension of that unknown is what's really hard on the business community, our members, the non-members, you know. So that, I would say, I know they've got a lot, and there's changes, affect every graph on every page of the code. But if you would, you know, just try to keep after them to say, hey, let's make this the priority, so we can finish, and we can move this off. And then we can work on that parallel path. There are those 500 other projects you've got them working on. And then the last piece I would ask of this group is, and maybe you've already had these discussions, but it'd be good for us, when we come back here in six months or 12 months, defining whether this was a success, is to come up with that number, right? How many projects that get applied for that need a Type 1 or a Type 2 exemption is acceptable? Is it 50% that need an exemption? Is it 70%? Is it 70% that don't need an exemption? I don't know that we've ever heard that number. If it has been defined, I apologize, but it would be good for us to all know that seven of 10 projects will need an exemption of some sort, or three of 10 is what our goal is. So if we could have you set that goal, so that way we know, that kind of goes to that predictability piece, we would certainly appreciate that as well. So thank you for letting us be part of the process. I do, we really have enjoyed the last couple months of this a lot more than the previous 34. And I think we're going to really do some neat things going forward with ways to roll this out, and they're going to be introducing new mediums to the Des Moines residents, and I think that's going to be some neat stuff. So please engage with us, keep us in the conversation. That's what we've wanted all along, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Dan, thank you.
I would like to answer. Thank you, Dan, for the conversations, because we've got a better product in front of us. Thanks to your participation in the association. Yes, there is more current information, as you might imagine, as discussions occurred last week. And I was able to share with the council what a schedule would look like to get the amended parallel track completed by the end of the calendar year. And so staff did a fabulous job Thursday and Friday putting that schedule together on how that could work. And so I was only able to share that with the council over the weekend. And so what I would tell you is that that will become public this week. And by the end of the week, there will also be a list of what all those amendments are that we'll be working on to stay on that same timeline track. So it, yes, there's an awful lot of work done, and I apologize that it's just not quite fast enough, probably.
No, no, I just want to make sure it's out there that...
It will get out.
You know, Chris asked earlier, can you share that with us? And I mean, I know those conversations are taking place, but it'd be good just for us to know where we are. What are we still working on? What do we, what do we agree with, what don't we agree with? So thank you very much.
Scott, I think his recommendation on talking about and having some matrix of how do we define success, or what are we going to measure, would be great. And I think it's going to be critical for the success that the next council is kept in the loop. I'd recommend that you and your staff develop a little one-page dashboard that shares quarterly or something with the council. You know, how many permits did we have for infill? You know, how many met them? Maybe what kind of exemptions they required?
Maybe the timeline of how long those processes were taking.
Yeah. And that's actually the second thing. When we come back for the third and final reading, I guess I would like you to kind of make a commitment on behalf of the staff as to what we think the typical turnaround would be. If it is, if it's an infill house, you know, what's the range of times that you think it might take? Because a lot of times, these lots are going to come up, and there's going to be a competitive, you know, effort to purchase them, and people are going to need a quick answer on many, many developments. They're trying to beat other developers to punch. So we need to be prepared to respond.
Yeah. Yeah, I can put that in some words. I will throw out a cautionary note, though. It won't likely be a percentage of, for instance, Type Ones that get approved, for the very fact that we don't control what requests come in the door. So we could literally have requests coming in, pouring in for, you know, 100% vinyl, no brick, 30% exceptions to everything. So the word of caution would be, I will not be measuring it based on a percentage of Type Ones, because we don't control what the requests are. Now, we can dive into the data as to what those requests were, so that you understand why maybe one month, 80% were denied. Well, here's all the stipulations that built up to that. So it won't be a percentage as a goal, I can tell you that much.
But you'll do exactly what you said, like, do we have the reasons, six months after we adopt it? Okay, look, and then we can kind of look at it during a workshop or one of our planning sessions, that we take a look and see, okay, where did we miss the mark at? Or, you know?
Yeah, because what I would envision is that if we find ourselves with very similar Type Ones that are being approved...
Right.
Then we're going to come back to the council and say, why don't we codify that?
Yep.
And make that the new norm, right? That's, but we need to work through what, again, this balance that was very well spoken that we need to, between what we are looking for, long-term and sustainable neighborhoods, and what the market's wanting to build today. And that is an exercise in balance. It's not everything that the market wants to throw at us now, and it's not everything of the city saying, we're going to wait, wait, wait for every, to get the best, right? There's got to be that balance somewhere in the middle.
My name's Kathy Simpson. I'm at 2517 47th Street in Des Moines. And when this issue was presented in the news recently, I was immediately concerned because I was concerned about the small individual that wants to buy a vacant lot at an affordable price, maybe sit on it for a while until they can afford a house, and then build a house from there. A little history on that concern is that my mom and dad built their home in the '50s. At that point, they had purchased four parcels of property, $25 each parcel. They sold the outer two and built on the inner two. They built first the basement, they lived in that for a time, and then they built a second story, lived in that, and then built the garage. My mom always said, as a result of that, that today, it was hard for people starting out to be able to do that because of different laws and requirements and things like that. And I guess I just wonder, I realize we want to be progressive, but I also wonder if, in doing so, we kind of eliminate options for people like that, to start out small, you know, be able to build up as they go. I think it would be an incentive for people to maybe save, knowing that that was an option. But we've heard a lot from the large developers, but nothing from the individuals. And another concern I have is when you've mentioned about requirements within a, like a higher-income neighborhood, maybe, or a larger housing area. To bring someone, to disallow someone to build a house that isn't consistent with the same houses that are in that neighborhood creates a cookie-cutter neighborhood, number one. But it also doesn't even make sense. I mean, for someone, for someone to move into that neighborhood, that land value is going to be more expensive for them to build a small house on than they're going to get on resale. So it doesn't make sense for them to want to go in and build a, you know, unproportionately small house on an expensive piece of property. So I'm not sure that that's a valid reason. But I just, I guess I'm concerned that, as a property owner myself, that if I purchase land, that the city is going to tell me not only how I can maintain that land, but now they're going to tell me what I can put on that land, as far as my home. And so that's just my concern. So, thank you.
Do we have anybody else other than this? I think Brad?
I'm Brad.
This is your friend over here, I'm sorry.
Hi.
So, you're back.
I'm back, yeah. Hi, I'm Brad Padre at 4407 Southeast 6th Street. Here to talk about short-term rentals again. Since the last time I spoke, and since short-term rentals started to become a conversation between the owners and I and city council, you know, a lot of different things have been happening. Most of the Iowa Housing, you know, Airbnb owners have stopped purchasing new properties. We've stopped looking, because we just don't know what's going to happen. We're very concerned about the future. Couple of deals have fallen through, and that's, you know, totally what's to be expected. I got an email today about a house that I put in an offer for several months ago. They were unable to sell it. They have a number of piping issues. You know, the inspector came back and said, all these things are wrong with the house, so nobody's purchasing it. So after a couple months on the market, the sellers come back to me and asked me if I want to purchase it, and I had to say no. I said, you know, when asked why, I said, hey, I don't know if I'm going to be able to make the money from this property after I, you know, fix all the things that are wrong with it. So the reason I'm here tonight is to make kind of a novel proposal to the city council and see what they think about it. When somebody tries to sell a house, they may or may not sell it quickly. If they start to notice, nobody wants it, for whatever reason, either nobody wants to live there, or it's too expensive, they drop their price. If they drop their price to a level that is the final, you know, lowest price they're willing to take, and nobody's still taking it, what it seems to be is that the Airbnb owners are the only ones who can still turn a profit in that area. So again, I'm not sure if there's any protocol for this, but if there is an application form that a seller can fill out, when they're filling, when they're selling their house, they could submit to city council or, you know, the powers that be to say, hey, I can't sell my house for this price, this is the reason why, I'd like to sell it to a short-term rental owner. The city can then grant them, you know, a letter that says, you know, maybe like a five-year variance on short-term rentals on this house after it's up to code. So what that does is that puts the seller in a really good position. We heard a lot from the homeowners like myself and some other people who have, you know, been investing in these properties, but the real secret winners here have actually been a lot of sellers who have gotten their homes sold, either much quickly or for maybe more expensive than they were expecting, because, you know, myself or one of the people in my community came in and took it off the market. What this also does is this addresses Mr. Mandelbaum's issue of affordable housing. You know, the concern, the discrepancy is that I believe that we remove undesirable houses, you know? And then the concern is that they'll stay off the market for a long time. So by giving the homeowner five years, we get the place up to code, we make it work, and then we use five years of short-term rentals to make our investment back, we then have no problem putting it on the market, once the market's rents catch up. So, yeah, really, I'm here to talk about trying to, trying to think of a novel way to do this. There's no precedent for what I'm suggesting, and I think that it's a great way for the sellers to know. If a seller can show me a letter that says, hey, I already talked to the city, I've had my house up for three months, nobody's buying it at my price point, if I sell it to you, I've got this letter that says, once you get it up to code, you can short-term rent it, I'm going to be very, very interested in that property. And the city can approve or deny that letter. You, you know, you can say, hey, you're trying to sell this house way above market value. You know, obviously, this is a little bit of a scheme. But if you see that this house has been on the market for three months, they're selling it at or below tax-assessed value, there's got to be a reason for that. You know, we don't have time to check out every house and figure out why it's not selling. But if you know a seller is trying to have trouble, or is having trouble, you know, getting rid of their property for whatever reason, this could be a great alternative. That's it. I don't have a really long speech today. I know there's a meeting on October 7th that myself and a number of the homeowners will be attending. So that's where we're going to kind of address bigger issues. But as far as what I'm here today to talk about, I think it's a novel idea. I think if it's something you'd like to discuss, every other Airbnb owner-investor loves this kind of plan. But that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Brad, thank you. Scott, why don't you go through what you had discussed about sort of a timeline on the different processes?
I'm glad, Brad, that, thank you. I'm glad that you're aware of the October 7th meeting, because that's on October 7th at 5:30 over at our MSC boardroom, and that will be specifically to talk about the short-term rentals. And so, yes, that would be the appropriate place to, if you would, reiterate your idea. I would tell you, just from my own view, that that sounds like a really good argument or case that would be brought before the ZBA for that use, to be able to say, this is the best use for this property, because it isn't selling in the market, right? So I would continue with that thought line and continue to bring up those types of ideas.
All right. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming forward, too, with the ideas, trying to do the balance.
I mean, since the conversation started, it's kind of sent different people into different directions. Some people are figuring they'll bail on it, some people are wanting to work with the city, some people are going off the grid, and they're like, eh, I'm going to not use Airbnb and try different ways. So I'm trying to find a way to consolidate everyone and meet the needs of the city. You know, we do understand we don't want to take the houses off the market forever, but we also want to make our investment back. We don't want to be sitting on properties that end up costing us a lot of money in the long run. I think if this conversation does go forward, it would give a lot of us the confidence to start buying up properties again, you know? And that's it. Thank you very much.
Counsel, as we think about moving this forward, I want to just tell everybody here that we appreciate your ongoing input. I think this is a, it's a tough situation. 1965 was a long time ago. Change is tough. It's rough, as you think, how it affects your business, how it affects the neighborhood. I think we've got individual homeowners that have some concerns as well. But we want to, hopefully, this whole idea was to give clarity to what we're doing, where we're going, what people can expect. But again, we also know it's change. Change sometimes is tough. But let's keep working together, and let's work out some of these concerns that you all have, whether it's stone on the front and what we do with gables and how that. I think that the exchange of this idea is valuable for us, and I think the manager has set up some process to get continued input, because we know it's a long, deep discussion around all the issues around the code itself. And we probably, it's probably not going to be perfect at final passage, but with this parallel path, it allows us to keep moving towards amendments to try to iron out some of these details. You know, Carolyn, I want to thank you for coming down and talking shortly about some of your concerns environmentally and otherwise. I do want you to know that on tonight's council, number 37, was an agreement between the city and the Iowa Department of Natural Resources to provide funding for the Southeast 14th Street Bio-Retention Cell Project, which helps us deal with some flooding issues and whatever. We are thinking of green ways to deal with lots of things. We are thinking of green ways to deal with lots of things and how we handle things rather than just put it in a pipe and send it more quickly to the river and sometimes a bigger pipe. Sixth Avenue, we have green projects going, and we've got an interesting project going on up in Beavardale. So we're, our engineers are working. We're trying to think who we are, where we are in the 21st century, and what we do about it, and we hope all those north of us in the watersheds think the same way, and we kind of slow the flow a little bit, knowing that there are going to be probably some extreme events. We hope we don't see another one like June 30 of last year very soon, but let's make sure we build right, we work together, we make progress, and we do it not only for today but for these homes that you're building today that are going to last the next 50 or 70 or 100 years. So we appreciate everybody's input in this process. It's been a long one. We're not done yet, and, but we hope we can get it closer to perfect and not have to make 300 amendments like we did the last one to get where we want to go, at least for the next 30, 40 years. So appreciate everybody's participation, not only in the past but moving forward. So having said that...
I would move 49A, B, C, and D.
So, Scott, no amendments at this time is what you're, I mean, can we make? I know that we kind of talked a little bit about the stone and things like that. Is that something we should do on the parallel track, or is that something we should do right now if we can all be in somewhat of an agreement? Because as pointed out, looking at these things, I mean, these were good visuals, I think, and we talked a little bit about the gables, and are we able to do that now?
Well, not without hitting the restart on the publication notices.
Okay. All right.
I just want to make sure.
Here's my concern. It's hard, I mean, I voted for it last time. You want me to vote for it this time? That leaves just one hearing left. Before we come back to the third hearing, can we have all the finals along with the draft amendments? Because, I mean, you're asking us to, you're asking me to take a real leap of faith, saying, "Oh, we're going to work this out," but we don't have that information.
Actually...
I want to see.
So let's clarify that. So we do have the draft zoning code from the 19th, and we have the, I believe, eight-page explanation of all the changes in that draft that have already been approved in the first reading and are on this item for approval of the second. So the intent would be to move that exactly as is onto the third with no changes in the third as well. On a parallel track, which the dates, again, we have just figured out what dates it would take to complete before the end of the calendar year, how we could get a group of about eight or nine amendments done in that timeframe.
And will we see those before...
By the end of this week.
Okay.
And there should be no, I don't think there'll be any surprises on what those are because you asked for some of them, and we've got a few from the association as well that can be addressed.
So mostly...
I'm going to talk about the draft ordinance, though.
I'm sorry.
You know, talking about the draft ordinance, you're talking about the...
Draft amendments.
Yes, what you would have is an explanation of each amendment, not the actual language that has to be produced over the next couple of weeks.
And, I mean, to Linda's question, which I'm sensitive to, some of the details of the amendments, are we going to talk about at our workshop on the 16th?
Yes.
So, the, I mean, I think this direct answer to Linda is, that won't be in final, final form when we vote on it on the 15th.
The 14th.
The, yeah, October 14th. Two days later, we have the workshop. But leading into there, Scott, I think what we, what would make me feel good is that as of where we're at the week before that, you know, the 10th or whatever of October, that we have a, it can be a short summary of bullet points. This is an issue that we expect to be addressed on the amendments. Here's our current thinking about how we address it. And just have it short so we know that all the issues are at least there for our discussion. And then the other thing that's important to me before we vote on the 14th is the charge of staff as, in terms of addressing the exemptions that they're authorized to address. You know, that we are going to have a kind of a statement of intent.
And are we going to share this information with the people out in the audience so everybody's clear what the amendment is, the proposed amendment, will be?
Yes, and the workshop on the 16th, so in advance of that.
Okay. I just want to make sure that everybody gets it.
Yep. And so, how about I make sure that all the amendment, just a second. So since we have the 16th schedule, which is a Wednesday, if the agenda for that and the explanations of the amendments are prepared and sent on Friday of the previous, the week before, that'd be the 11th?
Yes.
And that way, you have time to review those for the Wednesday conversation?
No, I, and I think Councilman Coleman maybe asked this, but I just want to be clear. So the criteria, and I've asked, the criteria for the exemptions, will that be part of the discussion that we have on the 16th? So, you know, Lance asked a couple of questions as, you know, "If I ask for one, do I not get any more?" Things like that. I think those need to be addressed, and we need to have, so their expectation is, okay, you know, this fits into the criteria that I'm going to get a 30% exemption. Is that, are we going to have a list of some of that criteria? Is that possible?
So like I mentioned, you will have more information, but it will not, it will never be completely buttoned down.
No, no, I understand that.
And so, we have added language like, "If 50% of the houses have that element within 250 feet," which is, you know, four or five houses in every direction. That's the stipulation we're holding to. Now, that will not always be the parameter, but that's what has come up on a couple that we'll talk about.
And last time, Joe, I just want to jump in here because last time, we talked about it, I think, I think I said this, that sometimes we can't say what we will approve or not approve, but we can say certain statements about what we won't, what won't be rules to decline it. So Lance said, geez, you've come in here, you know, for three houses in a row asking for an exemption. This one's a no because we've already been too nice to you, Lance.
That will not happen.
Yeah. I think we need a statement that says, "All development in all houses will be measured on their own, and we're not going to penalize somebody for doing more homes or, you know..."
I would feel comfortable with something like that. I know that the folks sitting in the audience would feel a lot more comfortable, and that's what they're, the uncertainty, if we can take out, I know we're never going to not take it all out, but as much as we possibly can, I think would be helpful to us sitting up here, them, the neighbors. So the expectation is, okay, this is, you know, and then throughout the year, we'll see exactly how that's worked, and if we need to make some changes within six months or a year or whatever we need to do. Is that, is that, I mean, do you vision it that way?
I envision more language that adds more clarity. I do not know if it will meet the threshold everyone's expected, so we will continue to add more clarity, and I, we really need the help of the industry, too, on crafting that.
Yep.
Because it makes no sense to craft that if the market's not there.
Right.
So.
All right. You're right there.
I think it moved a while ago.
Yep. So we have a motion A, B, C, and D, correct? And it's in place. To everybody, and I think to Linda's point, we don't want anybody to feel uneasy and that something is going to be, you know, sprung out on you and you didn't have a chance to look at it. We want the citizens, we want the developers, we want the builders, we want everybody to see what we're doing. We have, I've made a very concerted effort to be open in the process and talk about how it works, what we're doing, and I got to tell you again, thank you all for listening and participating and continuing to give us input. We're not, you know, this council is not trying to hide anything. We're trying to get it out there and have open discussions, not only about these policies, but, you know, most everything else that we do here. We don't want there to be surprises. We want people to say, "Well, here's what we're doing." We might have differences of opinion, but at least you know what we're doing, and we'll give you ongoing opinions, who we are, what we are, if there's legal implications. We have a gentleman right here that, you know, stops me occasionally and says, "No, no, wait a minute. You can't go like that. You got to do it a little differently." And so, we correct it. Manager gives us direction as well, and we count on our clerk and staff to keep a good, solid record of it. So know that we're here, this is an open process, and we fully intend to make sure it stays that way.
Seven, yes?
If we're not changing anything on this thing, we can't amend anything, why don't, I mean, is there any way that we can just waive the third reading? I mean, we can listen to everyone, but we can't change anything. We're not going to change...
Yeah, but we're still getting, we're still getting input, I think, which is one of the important things.
All right.
I mean, does everybody agree with that?
Yeah, that's good.
Everybody sitting in the audience, too?
All right. That sounds good.
You're good with...
We'll listen.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
Part of the problem. All right, let's go to ordinances. First consideration is amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Council Communication Number 19-428. A is a code modification related to the vacation of Wagner Street west of Fifth Avenue. And B is a modification to commercial loading zone on East Wallent Street between East 13th Street and East 14th Street. C is a code correction to match field conditions on Fifth Avenue between Watson-Powell Jr., Parkway and Park Street, and on Park Street between Fourth and Fifth Street. D is a code correction to match field conditions on H Street from Mulberry to Wallent Street. And E is a code modification related to a school bus loading zone on Grand Avenue west of Pope Boulevard near Merrill Middle School. Is there anyone here that would like to make any comment on this?
Seeing none, I'll move it, and I'd like to suggest we waive the readings. Several of them are just code modifications or corrections. So I would move, move the second and third reading.
All right? So it's moving 50A, B, C, D, and E and waiving the second and third reading. Correct?
Yes.
Seven, yes?
This is a request from Councilmember Coleman, Chair of the Personnel Committee. County Bozen and Coleman were on the committee to discuss and consider the following. A is receipt and approval of the City Council Personnel Committee's annual review and compensation review for the council's direct reports. And B would be a compensation change for the mayor and council. One, first consideration, the ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the municipal code regarding salary for the mayor and council. Mr. Coleman, should I, I think I should turn it over to you if you would like to.
I would like to maybe start by having some introductory comments and open it up then to the mayor and councilmember Bozen, who served on the committee, just so you get a thorough report and then would welcome any conversation. This is my last time doing this, and I would, I would say, in fact, I'd implore you to believe that this is the most important thing we do all year long. We say this a lot, that, you know, the staff are integral, the most important ingredient in our success as a city, and everybody that works for the city reports up through one of these three people. It's one of the unilateral things that we do as a council, to hire and supervise these, and it's a very important routine that we do. And I'm really proud of the way that we did it this year. I'd like to just recognize Connie and Josh, who were finishing up their kind of first year of service, not even maybe when we talked about trying to set more specific goals and have something more concrete to kind of review. And so, the citizens may not be aware of this, we had it on an agenda some time ago, but we hired a HR consultant to work with us, and over the last several months, I think the citizen should be, you know, happy to know that he worked very hard. It wasn't a really expensive consultant. We spent less than $10,000. They met with each of the three direct reports alone. They met with all of the council alone. They developed tools for us to provide input based on their key accountabilities and incompetencies that are required, and they helped facilitate meetings between the committee and each of our, our direct reports. It was a thorough process, and that consultant, his name is Mark Heston, he was really fantastic. His report is on our agenda, and it is public. It's about three pages long, and it has some really specific detail about their performance. I mentioned, it's three or four pages long, I'm not going to read it all, but mayor, if I could have the privilege of just reading some comments generally and then going through a couple of bullet points that summarizes their findings, I'd like to do that.
If you would do that quickly, that'd be great.
I will.
You get three minutes at the bell.
The specific details of the process and conversations with the individuals are confidential. However, overall themes emerged as follows. The mayor and council have high regard for the integrity, honesty, loyalty, and work of all three individuals. The mayor and council feel fortunate to have all three individuals leading their respective areas of the organization. The mayor and council recognize the rapidly changing landscape in which the individuals lead and appreciate the challenges that are faced by each, and the mayor and council have a high level of confidence in the competency and talent of these leaders. Specifically, I'll read two bullet points for each of the people. Ms. Diane Rao, who we've honored and celebrated tonight. The mayor and council are incredibly appreciative of the dedication and leadership and the exceptional performance of Diane that she's exhibited over her entire tenure as clerk. Diane has a significant amount of institutional knowledge that will be greatly missed as she retires. I star that one because it's incumbent upon the seven of us and the seven members of the council come January and February and on that that new clerk is given some supervision and our time, you know, to make sure that that transition works well. We're losing a huge asset, and we have to recognize that. Jeff Lester. Jeff is diligent and thorough in his responsibilities and exercises good judgment. The council appreciates that Jeff is extremely responsive and accessible. He responds to inquiries and requests quickly and appropriately. There's a lot of good things there in Jeff. I would point out, this bullet points as one of the goals, I mentioned, the observation about Diane's leaving and what's incumbent upon us. The last bullet point says that both the council and Jeff recognize the staffing challenges the city attorney's office will face as long-tenured staff members retire. Staffing issues are further complicated by changing and emerging legal issues facing the city. The council encouraged Jeff to do a thorough analysis of existing and future staffing needs, expertise, and establish a plan to meet those needs through development of current staff, attract a specific expertise and talent, or augment from external services. I think in essence, we're suggesting that Scott take time, and we know it's limited, to kind of do a little mini strategic plan for where the legal department is headed and to report back and get the cooperation of council to support that.
You said Scott, but you meant Jeff.
I'm sorry. Jeff. Sorry.
Scott said, "No, I can't do that."
No, we're asking, we're asking Jeff to do that, I'm sorry. Let me jump to Scott Sanders. The city's manager's performance is exceptional, and he continues to lead the city organization very well. The council appreciates Scott's willingness to innovate and explore options when addressing them. When a new idea is presented, he does an excellent job of researching and identifying headwinds that may exist and then formulating a... headwinds that may exist, and then formulating a plan to execute on the idea. I wanted to point that out. You know, when you go to a job interview, you always kind of say, you know, what's one of your weaknesses? You want to turn that weakness into a strength. The consultant said, you know, one of the weaknesses that Scott has is that he works too damn hard, and, you know, finding his life balance is, is hard for somebody in Scott's position, and especially Scott, who loves the details on the data. One of the things that the report points out is that, is that it's the consultant's view, the council doesn't talk to each other enough on major issues. We'll say to Scott, hey, will you check with everybody else on this? Or, hey, where, what does Linda really think about this? And he becomes this, you know, center point, the hub of all this communication, and that consumes a lot of each of his days, you know, trying to manage the communication. So, again, one of the priorities for this coming year is, is using days like October 16th, a strategic plan, to kind of, to delegate and make sure that we're talking to each other, and not just relying on making it Scott's job to have the same conversation seven times and then reporting back to the same seven people. And that has a lot to do with the boards that we represent the city on. So, for each of those, some real highlights, and then some of the goals. The last thing that I want to point out is that they, they work under the benefit package of the city. They have a couple of unique benefits that we will continue. One in particular is a retention bonus for Jeff, the city attorney, and Scott, the city manager. And it has been a five-year window where they receive a bonus at one point during the year if they stay, and that's kind of been our signal to them that we want them here, and it's also been a good reward for a good year. We're suggesting that still be a five-year plan, which means moving it out to 2023, so we add two years on to it, and it increases slightly by less than, I think it's a half a percent a year. And so, that continues on like it has before. We just add two years because we first did it two years ago. Am I making sense?
2024.
2024, thank you. The other thing is, we are changing their salaries. Like most employees, there's step-ups and, you know, cost of living stuff and all that. Today, on a merit basis, we're increasing everybody's salary because it goes back to July 1st, when we should have had it complete. And Diane Rao will have a 1% increase, Jeff Lester will have a 1% increase, Scott Sanders will have a 3% increase. And that is my report with one exception. This should be the easiest vote we cast all year long. We have really, really exceptional, committed people, and you can judge that by the hours they work and the confidence that their team and staff have in them. We're lucky, and I've been through a change of leadership here in all departments, and those are hard, and we want to, we want to keep our people functioning at a high level, and we're lucky to have them.
Nice work.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you for showing, you know, your leadership in putting this process together. The one thing I would like to add is that possibly, we as a council, we're developing a policy and a timeline that we make sure that by such and such time each year, all three reviews are done, so that it never gets late, and everybody, and they know, too, and we can fit it within the budget timeline. So, I think we need to have that discussion, and we might be able to do that even on this 16th.
I think, I think that that's important enough, Connie, what you're saying, and just because I've been the kind of chair of the committee for a while, somebody said, you do something once, it's a good idea, you do something twice, it's a habit, and I, I think that as part of our action tonight, we should just say that we're willing to hire Mr. Heston again, and do that, do the review in nine or 10 months on schedule in June, so it can be complete by June 30th. And I, and we have a couple measurable goals for each of them, and I think that doesn't give them a whole year to do that, but a reasonable amount of time to make progress on those.
I think it also then sets a timeline going forward, so once you set it, then it will be a yearly basis.
Yeah, I think it would be money well spent and time well spent for the council to take it up, and it'll be a new team of people doing that review.
So, with that, I will move? Do you want to say something?
While we're waiting to vote, I mean, I want to thank the committee for the work, and I'm real appreciative of the process that was put in place, particularly, I do like the suggestion to continue having some of that outside help that really allowed us to collect feedback and to sort of put some benchmarks out there going forward. I think that's a useful part of the process to, to look at what we need to do going forward to, to keep the operation and organization running smoothly. I also think that feedback about perhaps communication from amongst the council is, is an important one. I mean, I think there, we all sometimes feel there, there may be gaps from, whether it be regional organizations that we represent for this body as a whole, and maybe don't take back as, as often as we should. I think we should consider either establishing more committees as a council to, to do some of that work, or alternatively, maybe doing some actual work sessions relative to the various bodies that we all represent a little more often, so that there's some of those updates that we all know.
Yeah.
I think that's important.
Because I think that might, that might help address at least the council side of, of an issue here, but also maybe allow us to maximize what we're doing a little, a little bit more.
You know, one thing that I've watched other councils do in the metro, and I'm sure around the country, is, you know, they'll reserve 10 or 15 minutes at the end of each meeting, so over a quarter, you know, maybe one meeting is Metro Waste Authority and the CVB, and the reps get a chance to give a quick three or four-minute update. The next one, it's, you know, Dart and Bravo, and, and we kind of work our way through, you know, we'd have six meetings to kind of divide up the key boards and commissions that we, that we serve on, and would give us a chance to have a public update to everybody.
I think that's a good idea, and it would help all of us keep informed of what's going on with the different organizations in a better way, too. And if we also switched from one role to another role or a different group, you're a little more familiar with where they're at. So, with that, I'll move 51A and B.
Quickly, just.
Oh, 51A, sorry.
Look at you trying to sneak that through.
Thank you, thank you to you three, and I, and I mean that to Jeff and Scott, and of course Diane, but you guys work extremely hard, probably too hard sometimes, that you spend a lot of hours here when your family, you know, so, but I understand your dedication, and I appreciate that from all of you.
That was my comment, too, is that we've got people that are working way too hard. I mean, I don't think, I don't think the public understands how much time is spent.
How many Saturdays and Sundays are here?
I know, every Sunday night, I start hearing from Scott. No, he's not with his family, he's working.
Mayor, if I could just real quick?
Yes, please.
I really appreciate the kind words and the process and getting that complete, so thank you for finishing that out. I appreciate the confidence that you express, and not only myself, but the entire team and the other two as well. I think the, the success we have had recently at the city is somewhat unprecedented. We continue to address concerns that have been out there for decades. Unfortunately, the can had been kicked down the road, typically because there weren't resources, but also the leadership. And, and so, again, that's part of the council's role that has shown, the leadership is now in place to address these issues, whether it be 100-year-old bridge that needs to be replaced, or 55-year-old zoning code. I could go on and on, and you know these examples that you've been willing to address, and I appreciate that, because that's a motivation for staff as well, knowing they work for an organization that's willing to fix those things and not just continue the kicking of the can. Specifically in my review, the council has acknowledged what a strong team we have, and I want to make sure everyone knows that, that that was part of this report, because none of this gets done as individuals. We do have a strong team, and it goes all the way through the organization at all levels. So, I appreciate that that was recognized in this report. And thank you for also acknowledging that, that we're all going to work towards a better communication, because I think we can find that, that opportunity as well. So, thank you, very much appreciated.
Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank council for the review. I appreciate it, appreciate the kind words, appreciate the insight and thoughts that you all have about what we're trying to do. I want to, I want to say two things real quickly. Like Scott, the wonderful work that I do is because of the solid team that, that we've put together in the legal department. That's, that's a huge part of it. I can't give my staff enough credit for how hard they work. I'm not going to say what the item was, but we had something come up at the end of the week last week, and I had several people that we had to get together real quick and get it on the agenda. It's seamless, you all don't even see that, but we had people working extra hours, we had people working nights and weekends. Even today, we had an item come up at about 3:30 this afternoon, where I was asked to get something done, and we got it done. The second thing I want to acknowledge real briefly for council and for the public is what a joy it's been to work with Diane and with Scott, and they are both consummate and dedicated professionals, and I enjoy working with them and their team. They, they're a pleasure to serve and to help provide information, guidance, and direction for. And I would also, I guess lastly, echo that Scott needs to spend a little more time getting work-life balance, and I've encouraged him that over the last several years, so, thank you.
Something I wanted to also add, that we are going to set by June 14th the review.
Yep, and we're gonna rehire the consultant. Excellent idea.
Okay.
And to everybody here, and to the people in the audience, and I see staff sitting out here, and Scott, thank you for telling us we've had the courage to move an awful lot of things over the past few years, but I've got to tell you, it gets easier sometimes when we have a staff that works as hard as, as all of you do. And it, we go through some bumps sometimes, either dealing with the, with the public or dealing with business owners. We heard builders here, but we heard neighborhood people, too. It, it, we go to neighborhood meetings, literally hundreds of meetings a year, you know, either individually or at neighborhoods, or at churches, or at, you know, city council in our offices here, and we appreciate that, that exchange. But it's this staff that helps us deliver on it, whether it's potholes, you know, we, I was talking to Jonathan Gano, and we've been working on this ever since he came here and with his predecessors. How do we do it better, quicker? People have issues about our streets and the condition of them. I got to tell you, and, and I still listen, last year, I believe 17 to 18, we filled 6,000 potholes. This last year, with the innovative staff, with Public Works now working with IT, and let's make an app that does some things, we have that MyDSM app now. We have filled, on call because of GPS, if somebody takes that app out and takes a picture of that, we went from 6,000 potholes to 16,000 potholes. And I'm telling you, it's because of everybody working together and listening to, to the concerns of citizens that we've stepped that up. And I will tell you, in talk with Jonathan, he says, you know, mayor, not only do we fill those potholes, but we're scheduling them. So, if we get, you know, three on East 14th Street, we send the truck out there, and oh, by the way, as we go down there and pick up this one, this one, this one, that is GPS, sometimes there's six or eight more, and we do them all. And he said, I can't tell you exactly how many we filled in addition to those 16,000, but he says it's thousands. So, I've got to tell you, we're stepping into the 21st century in lots of different ways, and it's because of this staff working together and this council listening to issues with our citizens. That's how we've made this happen, and, and I want to tell you, I want to thank everybody for, for your work, so. Seven oh.
Seven yes.
All right, next, Mr. Coleman is B.
B, some people might think this is a step harder vote, but I want you to be convinced that it's not. The next item on our agenda deals with the compensation for the mayor and the council. I got a couple of things to tell you first. Tonight, if we approve this, the net effect on our annual budget is $23,040. It's not one of the 20 most expensive things that we did on tonight's agenda, but it'll get more space in the paper than any of them. I just want to put that in perspective, because in our, in, you know, between all of our budgets and all of our funds, we spend over $700 million. We're talking about $23,000. It's not a lot of money. Here's number two, that everybody, and I hope all citizens understand. The state has a law that I think is wise and appropriate, and that is, you can't, as an elected official, benefit from a raise until you've gone through an election. So, my seat, Linda's seat, Joe's seat, the mayor's seat, nobody can get that raise until an election happens this November, which means that if we want the council and the mayor to all have raises, we can only do it every four years by law, because we got to wait until the mayor goes through a, an election cycle, if we want to do all seven of us together, which I think is the right way to do it. So, if we don't do it now, we can't do it for another four years. The, any raise or any compensation change wouldn't go into effect until, affect until 2024. We've tried to find ways to deal with this by having some benchmark. Four years ago, we set a benchmark that maybe it makes sense to keep pace with the Pope County supervisors. Their full-time supervisors will, we're part-time theoretically. Did you read my note? I put "ha" that we're part-time, because we're, we're not really. These folks up here commit an unbelievable amount of time to the city and the citizens. But we thought, maybe we can peg it to the Pope County supervisors. It, it turns out that they've done pretty well the last four years. They use a compensation board that's external, and so they take recommendations from somewhere else. If we did that, our raise would be almost 4% a year, like 3.8%. The other benchmark that we've used occasionally is that the council and the mayor would not get any increases that were larger than our SPM-class employees. These are the hundreds of employees that are, that are not in a legal collective bargaining unit, that are managers, mid-managers, supervisors, and, and so, over that time, that group of people have not been rewarded an average of even 3%. And, and so, my recommendation, as the guy leaving that will never benefit from any of this, on behalf of the citizens, to say, I think that this four years, we should raise it. It should be in that neighborhood that it averages out to about 2.8% annual increase. It raises it by a couple of thousand dollars for the council members, and a couple thousand dollars more for the mayor. All of it is detailed in the agenda and on, but I'll give you the specific numbers, so nobody thinks that we're hiding the ball. The council's annual compensation would go to $28,880. The mayor's compensation would go to $57,760. I watch these people every day. If they did the math and wanted to figure out what they make per hour, it wouldn't be minimum wage. They'd, they'd go to work making pizzas or, or something else, and, and this is, nobody's in this to be lucrative. But the bottom line is, if we don't give a reward for people doing this, and I don't think as much as you seven, as who's going to run for office in four years, eight years, 12 years? If we don't, we're going to have retirees and independently wealthy people run, and, you know, that's, that's not a reflection of our city, and we should make it worth people taking away, working part-time, some other job, and doing this part-time, so that they can serve the citizens. If not, the culture of our city is going to change when we have only people of wealth and means making these decisions. And so, I recommend... And so I recommend that we increase the salary. All the other benefits would remain the same. The changes would go into effect 1/1 of 20 after the election. And this has to be voted on more times and, and because it's, it's embedded in our ordinance, so it takes three readings. I'm suggesting that one of those be as part of the October 16th workshop. I think I sent that out in an email that we could schedule one of them during that time. Again, it all has to happen before Election Day in order to, to, to be legal under the state law. And then, and then finally, and this isn't a big deal, but a lot of people don't know this, but all the council pay a little bit for their parking spot. And I think there's kind of clarity about how that can be used and how we can park in that lot and other lots and, and in parking spaces so that when everybody's doing official work, they're not penalized by additional parking charges as well. So that is my recommendation. This is a really tough vote, but keep in mind, you're voting for a raise after an election cycle where the citizens can take it out on us if they want. I don't think that we'll see citizens take it out on us because they see us at neighborhood meetings many nights of the week. They see us fielding phone calls and returning texts and, and writing emails and studying policy. This is a big job, and you all deserve a meager increase of $2,880. Averaged over the last four years since we got a raise, it's, you know, 600 bucks.
And it was a long time before that.
Yeah. We, we messed up and skipped once the four-year cycle. And then to be competitive at all or stay in the, you know, increases of 2% a year, it did look like a big increase. And I don't want you to be in that same position that we put ourselves in, you know, four years ago. That's my recommendation. I want to thank Jeff for making sure that it got translated into a roll call so we can do it legally and for Scott and his team for, you know, finding the mechanisms to make all this happen, so. I'll move that.
Okay.
Jeff, was I clear enough about and transparent enough?
You were very, very clear. Thank you. And you know, you can, I'm just briefly going to say, say real quick, I think you can ask my staff, I own, I own my own restaurant, you can ask my co-owner, and you can ask my family. It's not a part-time job. And so the next person that takes this seat needs to, needs to have that compensation so they're able to be able to do the things, or else, you're exactly right, independent wealthy people or retirees. The only ones that's going to sit up here and do it.
I'm going to take a little offense up at your bill, right?
Hey, sorry. I know, you're, neither one of you guys are retired. I know you worked all day long on Saturday.
None of us do this. None of us do this for the money.
I know. No, it's truly.
Anybody that's going to sit up here is not doing it for the compensation.
And I think it really is for the future, too. I think people, it's very hard to do a balance of your work in this position. And, you know, I'm sure Josh knows it, Linda knows it. I knew it when I was working full-time. It's very hard because the meetings and the timeframe of when those meetings and work sessions are really are, you're taking either vacation time or you have to have a very understanding employer. So I appreciate your comments, Chris. I think, again, taking the leadership and making sure that this is done because if you wait another four years and it's another four, and it just gets out of line to make sure you want to recruit and have people say, we want to give our time and talents to help make this city better. I think, have we voted?
Five yes, one no, one abstain.
I'm working my way through my bucket list tonight. I got a lot of things off the table that I wanted to get done, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Chris, I, as we move forward, I do want to say one thing. I thank you for your work on this committee for probably, as you say, a lot of years and maybe more than you wanted. But I think you have summarized who we are and what we are. And it's, it's to all of our direct reports, thank you for your work. To all of the other council members, thank you for the time that you put in and, and do it. For me, as was said, we, I don't do this for, nobody would ever do this for pay. The mayor's salary for Des Moines is, what, about fourth or fifth, I think, high in the But I, as I think about it, and I think who, who should do it, I got to tell you, at some moment or another, I think it should be identified as a full-time job because, you know, we're kidding ourselves. And it may, you know, for your legal opinion, have to look at, you know, some other changes that would have to happen. But I think Scott and I work together as a, as a team, you and I do. And, you know, it's, and I know you do similar things for the other members of this council. But, you know, sometimes I've seen weeks, and probably Diane remembers in 2008 and 10, when we were working, God, it seemed like $100 a week. But you don't do it for the pay or remember it. There was stuff that had to be done, and we needed citizens that knew that all of us and all the staff, we were out there because we care. We care about the future of this city. We care about the citizens. We care about their health and their life and their safety and their possessions. And that's, that's why people do this, this work. There may be others that enter into it at first because they think it's a, a great opportunity, a position of power or a position of something to sit on the Des Moines City Council. I've got to tell you, you know, it, it, it's a position of responsibility, and you owe it to the citizens and you owe it to the businesses and we owe it to the future. And everybody kind of discovers that after a while. And so I thank the citizens for supporting us and, but we're here to serve you. So, thank you. Item 52 is from Don, Don Beany at 3108 East 9th Street to speak regarding 910 Hole Avenue car.
Yes, Don Beany, 3108 East 9th Street. That probably sounds familiar, that address. That was where we had all the trouble for months, and Des Moines PD took care of it for us. Parked the car out there every night. It was awesome. I actually bring good news. My issue here has already been taken care of, but I still want to come and say thank you. And I'm a retired state employee, so I wasn't used to hearing that. I have a couple of pictures I'd like to show if I could, so you can see some progress.
I think it's just where the light's reflecting, isn't it?
If I put it in an angle that usually will.
This is basically, this is like less than two weeks ago. You can see how it floods all the time. There's no curb there. As Cattell Elementary gets bigger, there's kids walking by there every day. You don't know how deep it is. My daughter drove my new car through there, so we found out how deep it was.
Wow.
And I wanted to say thank you because it got taken care of. And let me show you the next picture so you can see progress. As you see, we have a curb.
I'm going to bend it just a little bit the other way.
And it's been backfilled in. And then this is along the line. That's right in front of the, the bar there. And I just want to tell everybody, thank you. We appreciate it. And it's Snoozerville, in case anybody doesn't know where I'm at. It's Snoozerville.
I know where you are.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to come, I could have said, I don't want to come down here. I could just mark it off, but I wanted to sit down here and tell you guys thank you.
Thank you for sitting.
You guys do need, you guys do need a raise because I know what it's like. I was a parole officer for 30 years. You don't hear thank you, so.
Did Austin hear that? He's the reporter.
Oh, it's true. And then, pardon me? Then, so if you could pass that on to Public Works. I didn't know they were coming out. I just looked down the street one day, well, last week, there's orange cones, and I walked down there, and the guy said, we're here to fix this. I was like, okay. And it's wonderful. That's part of Snoozerville. And the police saved us from that place, so I'd like to see it cleaned up, and that's what you guys are doing. And if I could, show one more picture. See, Mr. Mayor County remembers helping me out about 12 years ago. We accidentally ran into him. That was behind my house and coming from this way is a whole avenue tap, and so everybody went home at night, flew down the alley. And we bought the alley, then people kept going down the alley at night. So I made some east side stop sticks and I made some. I did. I drove a bunch of fence posts in the ground. It's my ground and they.
That worked.
It took two tow trucks to get them out.
Yeah.
And so I happened to see Mayor County just by accident, and I asked him if I could ask him a question, and I told him what was going on. I gave him my business card at the time. The very next day, Bill Stone called me personally and addressed what he said about, we have to have a safe place to live. And the very next day, they put a Jersey Berry down there, and that's been 12 or 13 years, and there has not been a problem since. As you can see, now we have a yard, not an alley. So I tell you guys, thank you very much. That's why I wanted to stay over and just make sure you guys do hear that we do care and you guys don't make enough money. I agree with you very much because everybody in this room that works for the city or state in any kind of position, there's no such thing as an eight-hour day. I know that, so.
Well, you lived it yourself. Thank you for your service.
I was lucky enough I made it, yes, sir. And I'm enjoying my yipers and raising my daughter, and I like where I live at. It's a great place. Every house sells as soon as it goes up for sale. And that's why I just want to make improvements as we can, so.
Thanks for coming down.
Thanks.
And if you can pass that down to Public Works, tell them thank you.
Definitely will.
It's done. They just came in like two, soon as they quit running, they poured the concrete and so it's off their list.
I'll make a move to receive and file and then to add a comment. I looked on my calendar, and you had sent me a message on September 13th, which was a Friday, to tell me about this. I recorded it on the mobile app, and so it wouldn't have gotten, they received it, I know that, but then on the 16th was the first day that the city workers would have been working. So in one, two, three, four, five days, it got done.
Yes.
And I went by today, and I know that.
It looks great.
Jonathan Gano sent me pictures, too. So really, in five days' time.
Yeah.
And they're not finished because they're going to put something else there so the buses and the trucks and stuff won't.
Don't go over it.
Won't, won't go over it. So they're not finished yet, but I think that that's pretty good that it's.
No. I, my, the one letter I did get back from the, said, you know, it could be next spring, and I know how busy they are. I drive the streets, I know. And so for them to be there within a week and fixed it, I didn't, I was speechless, so. And I just want to make sure you guys know that, that you guys have a lot of good people working for you. And Mayor County, thank you very much. You helped me out 12 years ago, just, I mean, quicker than that even, and we didn't have apps in, so. But that's what I do. So thank you very much.
Listen, next time something happens, give us a call.
So far, you've done 100%. I appreciate it. I've been here in Des Moines 30 years now. I'm not going anywhere.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Come back in a couple of weeks. What do you want?
I don't know how you guys, I don't, I don't know how you guys do it. I'm just sitting and not even paying attention, so it was hard. Thank you very much.
Item 53 is from Joe Grandinette of 6215 Gordon Avenue to speak regarding Ingersoll Avenue Streets in Frisbee Park.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman, it's an honor to be here. Joe Grandinette, 6215 Gordon Avenue. I'd like to talk about Ingersoll Avenue. I walked the beat there, going up and down both sides of the street. I found out some interesting information that you've had a meeting that you want to elevate the bike path, and you want to do back-end parking. Mr. Mayor, is that true? And if, if you've had a meeting, Mr. Manelbaum, I mean, is?
There's been a long process with the Ingersoll streetscape.
Yeah. And this is what you propose, this is what you're proposing?
The Ingersoll, the Ingersoll Schmidt.
Yes.
Has worked through this plan, and that, that is the plan that has come to us and that we're proposing with the Protected Bike Lane.
Well, I found out from several merchants, they didn't know anything about it. They didn't have any, they didn't have any idea there was a meeting. Mr. Mayor, are you in favor of this? Having back-end angle parking and, and elevate it?
Mayor, I'm going to suggest we don't.
Yeah.
Get into discussion one by one.
No, it's not a debate.
Why, when it's not even on our agenda. Let's wait and have that discussion later.
Okay. We'll move on to the next subject. I'd like to receive and file these letters here.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to receive and file.
On favor?
Aye.
They're received.
I live in the Frisbee Park area. This is a letter from Beverly, a friend of mine. She lives down the street. She sent this to you, Mr. Manelbaum. She hasn't heard from you for over a year. She sent this a year ago. This is an area where if you go down Southwest 56 and you cut across over the bridge, there's a strip of area there, about 50 yards, that has been patched maybe over 100 times. And this letter says that, that the city would put in a new road. This has been going on for over five or six years since they took over the bridge, put a new bridge in over Grand Avenue. It explains it everything in the letter. And when I looked at the source, it doesn't look like it's on any of this piece of paper here that you're going to fix it. You should, if you had to rate, if you had to rate the worst streets in the city of Des Moines, I would say this would be in the top five, in the top five, because it's a mess. There's no curb, there's no gutter, there's no sewer, stormwater, and it's highly, it's a highly traffic area because now the bicycle people, they use it, park their cars. It's a cut-through for a lot of people, but it was severely damaged when they put in the new bridge, and it hasn't been fixed yet. And Ms. Beverly is waiting for a phone call, Mr. Manelbaum.
Thank you. I'll move, but this is already received and filed. I'll follow up again. I believe I had a second conversation with her because I checked with Public Works. I will check my files and get back for a second time.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Let's see, where are we now? Item 54 was withdrawn. Item 55 is from Milton Sudbrock of 3021 Dean Avenue to speak regarding flooding on Dean
I have three sets of pictures I'd like to enter in.
I'll move to receive and file.
Okay. This is one. This is two. Take one of each. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Milton Sudbrock. I live at 3021 Dean Avenue. I've lived there since January 2012. Little over a year ago, during Good Guys Car Show, we got 10 inches of rain in Des Moines. I got less than four inches of water in my basement. After the Good, after the fair last year, the city and the fair come in at 32nd and Dean, put in a five-foot-high, eight-foot-wide storm drain into the fairgrounds, down in front of my house and all the way to university. The 22nd of June, I was in Algonah. Got three foot of water, as you can see in the pictures, in my. Got three foot of water, as you can see in the pictures, in my basement, because it took and backed up, because they're going from that big a drain to a 24-inch drain in the street in front of Feed Energy. I sent letters in to the city attorney, received a response that the state said it was not, because I did not call in after it happened for the city to check the drain, that the city was not responsible for flooding my basement. In the one picture that shows my driveway, it went up over those concrete barriers at my windows, and took out the back window closest to the back of my house. That's the highest it has ever been since 2012. It'd never come up on that part of my driveway prior. I have neighbor at 3031 Dean Avenue on the corner by Feed Energy, it took out eight foot of his basement wall. The city of Des Moines, he received a letter today, is repairing his wall, doing it to one other house on Car Street. I don't know all the neighbors there. And I say, the way I read the letter I received from the city attorney's office, that if I'm not in town when something like this happens and call it in, I'm screwed. And to me, the letter states, you know, hey, I'm stuck staying in town, can't leave. I mean, I can pass the letter around or put it here where it can be read.
So, Mr. Mayor, can I suggest that we have someone speak with him? This is the first I've heard of it, and I know he's in my ward, I haven't heard of it.
I do know the water is an issue over there, so I think if we could have...
It is.
...meet with this gentleman and have more conversation.
So you're like 31st and Dean, right over in there?
It's across from the fairgrounds.
Yes. We're Gate 9, it's going into the fairgrounds for a 20-inch building.
Yeah.
If you walk on the west side of the street, you walk right across into my driveway.
I will have to tell you, on that Sunday, where it rained about 3:00 AM, having a procession out there.
That's where these pictures are on the August 18th.
They had three feet of water in that whole parking lot.
Aren't we doing, we're doing some sewer work there, but we haven't been able to complete it because of the feed...
Energy.
It's the last piece of that. It's the last piece that hasn't been completed right there, because he hasn't been able, we haven't been able to close his facility.
So what is the schedule on that?
Spring, you want to come up? Just to make sure.
Because I talked with the county works, they are coming in within the next few weeks and replacing my furnace. I've already spent almost $600 to replace a water heater.
I wish you'd have called me.
I didn't know who to call, I called...
I think he went through the press.
I'm your ward councilman.
Okay, I will get your number.
It's on the city website.
Well...
You can email me.
I'm not much with computers, but I mean, I got...
Here you go, buddy.
Thank you, sir. I mean, I took and talked to the one neighbor at 3031 Dean, and he gave me a lady's name of Madison that works for the city, that's who's dealing with his basement walls. I did not have structural damage, a glass window's not structural.
Yeah, I understand.
And wound up and talked to one, two, three, four different places, and then got to the, to send in the stuff to the city attorney, which I did, and that's the letter I received back, and I don't understand why I'm not, you know, the city's not responsible for what happened to me, because I was out of town.
That's not the standard.
Oh, no, not arguing the standard, that's the letter I received, that's why I'm here.
No, I understand, I'm happy to have one of the attorneys who does work on our claims on occasion. This letter came from our claims adjuster, I'm happy to have one of the attorneys call and visit with you about the standards and the legal standards, and the elements of proof that we have to have legally before we can make a payment. So I'll be happy to share that with you.
As Scott took and stated, that there's a problem with Feed Energy to finish the drain, it's just like taking a funnel that's this big, down to fill a jar this big, and you start pouring it in too fast, you're going to overflow the funnel. Now, when you're going from that huge storm drain to a 24-inch one, or I might be off on that size. Because you can see in the pictures that show the flooded street, and it's hard to see, but in the one on the left, right-hand side, up by the light, you can see where it's actually bubbling out of the concrete.
Yeah, it's, that's bad. Steve, you know when it's going to be fixed? He's right behind you, he's a city engineer. Maybe we can get at least a timetable so it doesn't happen again for you.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. I say, he can, you know, he wants to give me a call on that and talk to me, I have no problem with it, but please leave a message, because I got doctor's appointments and that all the time.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
If I could pull this up. All right, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, Steve Neighbors, City Engineer, regarding the schedule for the work that would be south of Dean Avenue regarding the Leetown Creekway Project, we're anticipating actually bidding the, what you see on the exhibit here, there's, we're looking at adding three culverts under the railroad bridge that would be bid, along with the sewer to connect the sewer that was just installed through the fairgrounds this fall, okay? And so that would allow for construction to start early next year, and be completed by the summer. The purple, the purple box that's going through the fairgrounds is actually sealed off at the, up at the northwest corner of the fairground site. But, so it's, so the flooding in the fairgrounds still obviously is a concern until we, until we get this box through the, under the, or get the added culverts under the railroad tracks completed. But just to be clear, though, there's still, this is to convey what's considered the Leetown Creekway Drainage, the drainage that's through the fairgrounds. The, there still are future phases of the sewer work, that for example, at East 32nd and Dean is a low point, okay? And so, so even after this project, there still can be flooding on Dean Avenue, just not as severe. So the culverts we're putting under the railroad tracks are to fix the major events, but there still could be flooding that occurs at East 30th, East 32nd and Dean, and up, and up at Grand and Walnut. Those are separate watersheds. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, the culverts will drastically improve the drainage and convey the drainage to the fairgrounds, but it's not the end-all fix, because there's actually multiple watersheds that we're, we're dealing with here in this area, so.
And Steve, where the blue and the green lines is set right through Feed Energy?
That's correct. So the blue and the green lines, as well, is right through the Feed Energy property, and those along with the three yellow culverts are what we're targeting to bid this fall and hoping to start early next year.
Where do you live at, Milton?
Approximately right there.
And where's the neighbor at that lost the foundation, or is it...
Right on the corner, right at the blue line.
Okay.
Because that is, I don't want to really call it, it is a street, but it's really not a two-car white street.
Is it a car? Is that a car?
I mean, there's not a lot of traffic back there, the car street.
Yeah, let's...
So, I mean, we managed to alternate it, and I was going to say, on the handouts I gave you on August 19th, or 18th of this year, the flooding that chose, and you can see it there, I did not get no water in my basement from that. And there was a van flooded just off the left side of my house, in the water. I mean, it's got to come clear up over my, almost over my front step, that's about this high above the sidewalk, before I start getting water.
So when did you report all of this to the city? After you flooded, is that you're asking, for the claim? How many days was it?
It was about the 6th or 7th of July, I started making phone calls after I got back. I was out of town.
When did you, when did you get flooded? How many days before you started making phone calls?
I got flooded June 22nd, when we got four inches of rain.
It's about two weeks.
Yeah.
This is, I go up, I'll go into the Freedom Rally, I have friends up there, I go work on this farm and that.
Okay, any more information that we could get?
All right. So, the legal's going to work with you, I think the problem is going to, and he'll have to address it, but it's probably the two weeks that went by before you reported the damage, going to our insurance company and saying...
Well, I mean, to report it to the attorney, it was some time, because...
I know, I understand.
When I met, I guess I had her name here a minute ago, and was given her number for, with the structural damage, I took and called, started calling, because I figured, I shouldn't have called the legal department.
No, I understand, I completely understand.
That's why it took so long to get to it.
I understand. Somebody from your department's going to reach out to him. All right, I'll move to receive and file Mr. Sudbrock's comments.
Thanks for coming down.
Refer it back to the legal department, they'll reach out to you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
All right, item 56.
Kathy Simpson at 251747th.
Okay.
I appreciate Mr. Sunblum's issue here, because I have a similar issue regarding flooding. I'm a little disappointed in Mr. Gatto, because it seems like you're kind of passing, passing him off on this, as far as notification. I just want to say, from an insurance perspective, policies are written on a claims-made basis or an occurrence basis, and it depends on what your city policy is. But reporting a claim has nothing to do with two-week timeframes. So, Mr. Sunblum, if this man may have recourses other than being told that, well, A, you did not report this in time, and...
I don't know that for sure, I just, I, that's why I refer it to you.
There's no insurance, ma'am. There's no insurance, the city's self-insured on this type of thing.
Okay, that's what I wondered too.
Yeah.
But my concern, though, is, and this is related to my own issue, is that my issue relates to years and years of coming to this council and requesting assistance on the council's decisions regarding infrastructure. This is a very similar kind of issue, only it's more pronounced because of recent. I didn't take, I wasn't, I'm not a developer, and I didn't take, you know, multiple, you know, a long time to talk, so, you know, looking at the clock with me, I'm sorry.
I wasn't looking at the clock, I have a watch to look at that.
Well, I'm sorry, this is really upsetting to me, because individuals like us come to you with these issues, and it seems like you're not willing to listen, or you're willing to sit back and look elsewhere, roll your eyes. We are the taxpayers of this town. We have a voice too. And I see, I'm an east sider, I know where Mr. Sunblums lives, and I just don't want this council to put him off, because of something that was clearly done without notice to these residents of the potential, or the fact that going forward, they could experience more flooding? What is that? That's not a solution. Well, you know, we're going to be doing this project in so much amount of time, therefore you might encounter more flooding? You know, I mean, get those pumps out there. Buy pumps for these areas of town that are flooding and causing massive damage to people like me. That's just what I'm saying. Buy more pumps, get those out there. If you have to create a pump department, do that. But you have an issue with people in this town flooding, seriously flooding, losing things year after year, and it's not right. And there is something you can do, and it's called pumps. So, that's all I got to say.
All right, item 56, from Jamie Smith and Jennifer Peterson to speak regarding Beaverdale flooding.
Kind of seems like we just got here. Hey, Council Mayor, thanks, we appreciate the time to speak today. We wanted to talk about the flooding issue in Beaverdale. I'm going to read a statement, because some of our neighbors, we kind of made a collective statement, so instead of me rambling on, I'm just going to read what we wrote. So I want to talk about three things. First, we want to take this, thank the city council and the mayor for recognizing and dedicating resources to solving the flooding problem in Beaverdale, and we really do, I mean, you guys have put a lot of work into this, and we're super appreciative. We do want to urge the city council to encourage the Public Works Department to improve the emergency flood response protocol in the short and long term in our vulnerable neighborhood. Third, we would like, I want to let you know that we are willing and engaged as active partners to improve stormwater management in our community. I'd like to acknowledge and state for the record how grateful we are for your efforts to ensure that our tax dollars are being used to improve our area by modernizing the storm drainage infrastructure around our homes. We understand this project will take some time to complete, and in the meantime, we remain on edge about the risk of flooding. We are struggling with maintaining faith in the Department of Public Works willingness and ability to operate the emergency pump, if heaven forbid, the need arises. I know you're familiar with the flooding problems, but we want to just provide a bit of background as to why we are motivated to be here today. Since the catastrophic storm on June 30th, the Public Works Department assured us that they would operate a mobile pump in our intersection when there is a threat of flash flood. They created a written protocol for acting this, activating this emergency pump, and I have that with me, if you want to pass that around, you can take a glance at it. That's the pump that, or the protocol that Adam Smith came up with, for the...
We can each have one.
Yes, you can.
I'll move to receive and file.
On, favor?
Aye.
Okay, received.
The protocol is initiated when a member of the public notifies the call center that flooding has commenced. The call center then decides whether to deploy resources. The mobile pump protocol has never been effectively implemented during a flood. We experienced two flash floods this summer where we needed help. And here is a photo of that flash flood. We took Jen Peterson, who lives at, is that 250047th, right there on the, that would be the northwest corner of 47th and Holcomb. She took this picture outside her front door, and then the picture on top is what the pump typically looks like sitting in our corner, and this is August 20th, the actual flood, you can each have one of these. But I'll wait so you can see that there. So despite multiple assurances from the call center that help was en route during these events, help never arrived. Once the sewer backs up, it takes about 15 minutes of heavy rain for water to fill the intersection. I mean, it's an anomaly, it's crazy. You would not think, from the time it breaches that sewer, that in 15 minutes, you cannot walk in that intersection anymore. It's, I mean, it's crazy, and it's hard to even imagine, but it's true. In the photo there from August 20th, you can see how the water's approaching the house, and the pump is submerged in floodwater, without hoses and without an operator. You may also notice the flash of lightning in the background. This photo captures many of the flaws in the flood response protocol, but cannot fully capture our sense of frustration of being assured that help was en route when in fact it was not. So, I mean, once we get to that point, we don't even want anyone going out there, they're going to, it's just dangerous at that point, they couldn't even possibly find where to hook up the pump. Several hours after the water receded from the last event, our neighbors interacted with Public Works employees who made statements like, "There's nothing that Public Works can do to control Mother Nature." These statements underscore a sentiment that Department of Public Works employees don't necessarily see their role in fulfilling the flood protocol. It's frustrating to us, because our homes are not on waterways or creek beds, they are flooding because the stormwater drainage is insufficient, which of course you know. Till the problem is resolved, we are on edge every time there's a heavy rainstorm. All you have to do is come to our neighborhood, and I'm sure there's a lot of neighborhoods like this, but you can just stand at our front door, and we're all just waving at each other, because we're all just watching the water rise and panicking at the same time. So, as an aside, during the last rain event, two gentlemen from Public Works came out, and they arbitrarily decided to place the discharge hose to the west, up Holcomb, and the city's operating procedure, there's states that it should go south to Hick... the city's operating procedure, there states that it should go south to Hickman. And, they literally did this. They came and they went, "Yeah, let's go that way," and then they just changed the protocol and sent it up west, which, we're not sure if that's a good idea, if that just is gonna come right back down into our, our hole there. With that said, I do want to acknowledge that every time we've had a protocol failure and citizens complain, we end up having a more robust, robust response from the public works department for the subsequent few rain events. Then, over time, this response fades until we have another large unpredictable storm. For example, after we are listed on the agenda at the city council meeting two weeks ago, I called public works and talked to Bob, and he said, "Hey, this is of the utmost concern, and we'll have somebody spend the night there if we need to." Anyway, after heavy rain at this, and then on that last heavy rain, there was no city employees anywhere. So, they were willing to spend their night, spend the night in their truck the first rain, and then on the next rain, the next weekend, there was nobody to be found. Today, we asked the city council to encourage public works to conduct an after action of their flood protocol and find a better solution that does not put us at odds because we don't want to be. We want a healthy partnership with public works and believe they want the same. It's just finding a way to the same page, that's all we're looking for. We requested improvement to the interim, interim protocol as we await the more permanent project as well as modification to the permanent project. Specifically, we ask that the public works department consider automating the current pump or providing a new permanent submersible pumping station with a buried pump discharge pipeline as part of the holding tank project. This would ensure that the line would not run across lawns and driveways and could be easily accessed to connect a pump during a flash flood now and in the future. More than anything, we ask that they keep their word when they tell us help is on the way. We just want to, if, if they say they're gonna come help, just come help, and if you're not gonna help, just come tell us and we'll figure it out. Finally, I want to close by again thanking all of you for your persistence in solving this problem and assuring you of your community's commitment to serving on committees, committees attending working meetings, and making landscape level improvements to reduce storm water runoff. We want to be a partner with the city on this effort, and however we can be a part of the change, by all means, sign us up. So, again, we're just looking to improve our partnership and just figure out this, this pump situation, because so far, it's been a complete bust. And, quite honestly, somebody in the neighborhood said, I don't know, maybe it's the neighborhood pacifier, I, I don't know what, what it is, but I know that there are good intentions and it's meant to work, but it's not. And so, what can we do to make it work? That's all we're looking for. That's it. Should we be calling a different number? Can we be more proactive? When there is a heavy rain coming in, we contact the public works and we start emailing and texting and say, "Hey, this doesn't look good, maybe we need to be proactive at this point." And, and again, it's usually we see the people driving by after the storm has passed, so, or if they do come, it's too late, and we don't want anyone to get hurt. We'd rather have water, to deal with water than somebody getting hurt, obviously, by trying to operate that pump, so. That's, that's all we had to say. Do you guys have any questions or comments for any of us?
City manager, I think that certainly we ought to receive her comments, and I would like to follow up on her stated problem, not only here but down on Dean. You know, what is the protocol? How do we follow up on this? Obviously, in this particular case, we, because of June 30th of last year, we, you know, put that pump out there, we gotta figure out how to, when we get a situation, it, how do we get it on?
Well, you know, the first thing that comes to our mind is like automation, like automating the thing, so, you know, somebody's not coming out there trying to plug this thing, because again, once that water breaches our storm sewers, you literally have 15 minutes, and that's it, before that whole intersection is flooded, and then you're, that, that pump's not gonna do you any good. You can't, you can't go out there. And man it, I mean. So, maybe that's an idea, I don't know. But, we're not engineers, we're just throwing things out there.
So, let's, let's refer to city manager, and I'd like to get some...
Actually, I do have a...
I was gonna say, Bill needs to speak to this too, because we've been working very closely with Bill, because I know he's also...
And I'm only two blocks away, so I'm right, same.
Yeah.
I had a meeting with Jonathan Gaynor, the public works director, and we went through that protocol and where it failed, what went wrong, and what can we do in the future.
Okay, great.
The, the number one thing is that in the past, what we were doing was, as soon as we saw a cell go through, if it passed, the guys would leave. Now, if another cell came in and boom, drop it, we're caught with our pants down. That's exactly what happened. So, Jonathan is committed to leaving two guys there until the whole rain event is done, period, over and done.
Okay.
They will not leave, they will not abandon it, it's gonna cost us a few extra bucks, but it's worth it to have everybody's safety and, and property taken care of, so, and I sent that into an email to Jenny, so she knows about that too, but we, we are modifying that. And if we have to do more modifications, we definitely will do that as well. But, it's something that we've never done before, to have a flood protocol set up like this, and it's very important because this is a very unique situation.
It is very unique.
Thirty-one acres, all drained to one spot.
Right.
And so, what, that's why we have to keep making sure that we take in all these adjustments. I hope having two guys sitting there through an entire rain event will take care of the issue. I hope, I truly hope so. If it doesn't, we'll be ready to modify it again.
When did you have that communication with Jonathan?
Uh, I just got back in town Friday, so it was a week before that, so, probably the first week of September.
Good rainy weekend, yeah. Okay, 'cause I'm just saying, well, there was somebody on one of the rain events, and then on the other rain event, we didn't, so. Okay. They were there twice. They were there twice? Okay. All right. I'm the one that lives on the corner of the pump.
Would you step up to the microphone, please? Give us your name and address.
I'm Connie Lynn, 2420 47th Street. I've lived with the pump for the last month. I've lived with it before, last summer. This summer, at least, they did come and watch it, but I don't know why, because they have it draining over to 48th and Holcomb instead of up on 47th and Hickman. There is no place for that water to go at 48th and Hickman. All right, 48th and Holcomb, I mean. It has to be going to the drain pipes or whatever the little...
Well, it has been going south all that time, I don't know why they, I have no idea.
Again, the two guys just came out and just literally looked and...
And it still hasn't changed. So, if we get, get rain tonight, it's all gonna come right back to the, to the corner of 47th and Holcomb where I live. This is, this is the second time I've had to live through these floods, and the first time, we asked them to improve the sewers and nothing happened. This was at least 10 years ago. Then it came again to whatever, a year ago, almost a year and a half ago. Anyway. Finally, they are addressing it, but it's, it's almost comical. I mean, you could walk out there and see the, the plane of the land going down to 47th and Holcomb from 48th and Holcomb goes straight down.
But, we've also had rain events where they're not out there. August 20th, nobody was out there. That day, that picture was taken, August 20th, the pump was underwater and there was nobody to be found.
Right.
So, I mean, that's important.
But, there's been two times that they were out there, because I see the truck and I hear the truck running, 'cause it's running right outside my bedroom window. So, I know there's men out there all night long, and they've been out twice, but I'm just, it's very comical. It's, it's almost like Abbott and Costello out there trying to run a pump or whatever, run where the water goes, 'cause there, it's just gonna come right back.
And to your point, Bill, that doesn't, Jonathan may not be aware of that quick decision they made, and I think when he finds out, he'll say, fix it back to where it was.
Exactly. That's what we want to make, drive the point home.
Right.
Okay, is there anyone else here to speak?
I'm sorry, and you know, I probably should've been here months ago, and it's my fault for not, because probably my property is the one that has been on TV at least 20 times. Now, do you think I could put a "for sale" sign out in my front yard with that?
That's all I have to say. I'm done. Okay, thanks for coming.
My name is Steve Wade, 2515 47th Street, and I just want to kinda add to what everybody is saying. I think you can hear the frustration with all the neighbors in the neighborhood. We do appreciate what we're doing going forward with the plans, we're all informed on that, we appreciate that. But, in the meantime, you know, we're looking at a five-year plan before the pipes are hooked up, is my understanding, and then we're looking at a one-year, two-year plan to put holding tanks in our street, if that's correct. So, what we're looking at is to change this protocol, to change the protocol, am I wrong?
Sorry, Steve.
No worries, no apologies. Honorable mayor, members of council, Steve Neighbors, city engineer. So, so Steve is correct, and I know, I probably, hopefully have gotten some notices and stuff, but, you know, we have a construction contractor under contract to build what is called the 47th and Holcomb storm sewer improvements. So, public works and engineering, and along with Pam Cooksey and city manager's office, went back and kinda took a second look, obviously last fall, at the closest creek watershed plan that was developed a, a number of years ago. One big change that we made was to put in large underground storage chambers underneath the road to, to kinda act as an underground detention basin. So, Steve is correct, the, the ultimate plan to get the large sewer up to this area, 47th and Holcomb, will take about five years, but the benefit of doing the underground storage chambers is, it gives a relief for those more frequent events, at least, you know, the 10-year type events, or, or even up to the 25-year events. So, in terms of the more frequent rainfall, we, there'll be a drastic improvement in that aspect as well. Now, again, yes, the, the 100-year storm event will definitely cause issues until, especially until we get that, that sewer up there, but, and then the 47th and Holcomb street improvements, to answer his question, we do anticipate it will take probably till, I think, to the end of next year, if I remember correctly, is the completion date of that, of that project.
From the storage tanks?
The, the underground storage chambers that will go under 47th and Holcomb, the contractors indicated that they're...
What's the capacity of that?
Uh, it's, it's, it's really, again, it's, it's too, it, it, what we've done is done inundation mapping to actually show where the flood, the waters would, would get to the houses, so it's harder, the, the design in, in general is, what we did is, the, the sewer box that comes up Macocata and eventually all the way up to 47th and Holcomb, we left at the 100-year storm water design, and then added the detention basins, and Steve has been in a number of meetings with us last fall and spent a lot of nights with us, and it, the, the base, the underground storage chambers actually really are kind of above and beyond what our city design standards are. We talked a lot about resiliency and kinda adding a little more into that, but the benefit of the chambers are that early relief, because, so they don't have to wait for the, the five year completion, at least to get some relief, 'cause, to be honest, right now, the very frequent events, like the, for example, the 10-year storm event, and it's, a 10-year storm event doesn't mean an event that happens every 10 years, we've, we've talked a lot about that, that's just a percentage chance of that storm happening, and, and so, those very frequent events are causing flooding that is, is impacting the houses, and so, that's the goal, is to at least with the chambers, provide that immediate relief for the more frequent events, and then also provide the resiliency with the, when the 100-year pipe comes up, so.
So, is all your basements getting flooded every time it rains? Is that what the deal is?
No. No. We've stayed ahead of it. Right. But, it creeps up on the lawns.
But, there hasn't been any damage since June 30th, right?
June 30th was...
June 30th of when?
Last, last year.
July 1st, we had the major...
Okay, so, so this year, you guys, July 1st, all your basements?
No.
Not 2018, July 1st.
So, since July 1st, with all the rainfall we've had over a year, is it, does your basements flood every single time?
No.
No. The, the work, the street floods, and, and, I mean, I...
I just want to make sure of the...
...jump in, twice this summer, and I think part of it is a communication issue, and like a lot of things, it's like the old game of operator. I was just going through my, my texts, and I, I have pictures from June 23rd, I was there, and on August 20th, and I think one of those times, you were out of town, and we talked when you were in Canada. The mayor called me, because a lot of people couldn't get around the city and ask if I knew anything about the neighborhood, and Jonathan, I, Jenny texted. I was in her yard on the 23rd, took, took my own picture of the flooded-out pump, and I knew that Bill was meeting with, with Jonathan to kinda reexamine the, the protocols. Exactly. I know that there's been a couple of times, the pump has been on, worked, and luckily, I think those were the worst of the storms.
I don't think the pump's been on.
It's never been on.
The pump has never been turned on.
The pumps, it's, it's, maybe not this year, late last summer it did.
The pump has never been turned on.
It's never been turned on.
Now, we all went and bought our own pumps for last year.
No, I, I, I was under the impression that it pumped to, just to...
The pump has never been turned on.
It hasn't this year, but it works.
They laid it out, but they never pumped.
Okay, so it was only laid out.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, honorable council, Adam Smith, public works, deputy public works director. They're correct, the pump has never had to run. By the time we get out there, the storm sewer's taking the water, so there's no sense of turning the pump on. As to the protocol, I will speak to the fact that if we, if there's predicted heavy rain, we have someone out there, what we can't respond to is the pop-up thunderstorm that we, is not predicted. So, let's say there's a, a chance of rain tonight, and it turns into a thunderstorm that we weren't expecting, we have to get somebody out there. So, several times, I've left from my house, about a 25-minute drive there, by the time I get there, the water is already down. So, at that point, there's nothing we can do with the pump. So, and a very rare occasion where the water sits there long enough for us to actually try to pump it.
And, and, go ahead.
I also want to clarify too, when we talk about designing storm sewers, I don't want to, I don't want to misinterpret expectations here, when we, when, when, the, the statewide design standard, and this is a design standard even when I lived in Chicagoland and, and Wisconsin and whatnot, the, the streets, the streets will have water on there, they're, there's not, we don't size storm sewers so that the streets are dry during storm events. So, I guess I want to just set expectations, when we do our inundation mapping, our goal is to protect structures, is to prevent the water from inundating the structures. And so, I just want to, when I was talking about some of the, the future design improvements, that you'll still see, what, you know, just as you do, I, I live in the northeast side and, and, and the newer development, that there are, the, the streets are, are flooded and inundated with water, it's, it's inundation, so I just want to make that, that clarification, so.
Can I just ask a question? Is the holding tank, the holding, whatever you're putting, so, on a rain like the 20th?
August 20th. Would that have held or got it out of the street faster than, or someplace for it to go?
The, you know, on, on that event particularly, it's, it's hard to say, the, the benefit of that, essentially, essentially what happens right now is, is the existing sewer system that, that leave, leaves the 47th and Holcomb area is not sized to, to handle the larger events. So, essentially, you know, 47th and Holcomb is a low point, and so it's kinda like a picture of bull, and so that bull essentially functions kinda like a detention basin, right? And so, so the sewers can't, the sewers can't handle it, so then it fills up, and so, the bo, the box, the, the, the large box sewer, and it, and it's massive, I mean, we're talking, it goes up and down both side streets, it, it will actually put that water underground as a sense of what it's, what it's doing. And so, so I would say in a, in an event that's, that's kinda modeled for with the inundation mapping, if I remember correctly, it's, I'm having a brain freeze, either the 10-year or the 25-year, but it's keeping that away from the houses, 'cause right now, when we model things, there are houses that are impacted with a 10-year and 25-year event. And again, I know people get tired of hearing those, those frequency terms, you know, a flood event is different than a rain event, right? So, if our grounds are very saturated, right, and, and so, say, say we've had a lot of rain, our grounds are saturated, a 10-year storm could function like a 50-year storm because there's nowhere for the water, water to go, and so it's very tough to discuss kinda what, what we're designing for, but that's, we're using, that's what we do.
But, it will hold quite a bit of water.
It will hold an obnoxious amount of water, yes, yep, yeah, yeah.
That's all I need to know.
I, I, just, in terms of your statement right there, it scares people, and there's a level of fear, but you don't consider it a flooding problem if it, if it fills the curbs. That's part of the design to, to keep the water...
Yeah, our, our design standards are, are, when we model it, is to keep the water kinda within the, the right-of-way, if you will, so yes, and the flooding in the curbs and streets is, 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 it can be expected in certain scenarios. And we actually have different design standards, and I want to confuse more, but based on the type of roadway, so for example, if we were designing an interstate or a high-speed highway, we would be allowed less, less width of spread of water on the roadway. So, so a higher-volume roadway, we try to have less water, but even on a higher-volume road, while, during certain events, there'll be considerable amounts of water. So, that's why you see more catch basins frequently... So that's why you see more catch basins frequently on, on these events.
When it, when it rains in South Union and Kirkwood, it's well up into the parking lot of Baras. Every single time, there's a heavy rain. You cannot pass South Union. So it looks exactly like that street every single time, until it stops.
I can show you some other pictures.
Yeah, no, I understand. I'm not saying that yours isn't bad, but I mean, I'm just glad your homes and my restaurant doesn't get flooded at the time.
Yeah. The reason, the reason for that picture is because it's a recent picture, and we're addressing the pump issue.
Yeah, no, I'm...
Not so much the street issue. We, we get there's a plan for that, and we like, you know, we're happy with the way it's going forward and the work that's been done. It's just addressing getting everybody the same page on the pump issue. And even after, I mean, we're talking about layers and years of floods, so, you know, right now, we have the pump. Hopefully, by the end of next year, we'll have the containers under the street, and then hopefully, from there, five years later, we'll have the pipes hooked up, and that, that should help quite a bit. So what we're asking for is to address the pump protocol for now, until the containers get under there. One other thing that Jamie mentioned is, for the engineering department, is there a way, let's say those containers don't hold some of that water, or enough water, to keep it out of our houses? And I'm the first, I'm the furthest away, or one of the furthest away from the corner, so there are people that are affected more than me. But is there a way to, to install some type of a permanent slash temporary pump until that five-year deal gets hooked up, instead of running the hose across everybody's driveway and up to Hickman? I don't know if you're gonna, by the size of that hose, do you have to stop traffic on Hickman? Is it gonna go hit your house? I mean, where's the water going? So what we're thinking is, and again, I'm not an engineer, but is there a way to lay up, as they're tearing up and making, putting tanks under the ground, is there a way to put a temporary, another pipe that that pump can be just hooked up to in the case of them, instead of running everything? And even better yet, can it be automated? Would be the ultimate solution, I think, until the connections are made. And that's what we're kind of asking for, is to improve the protocol and then look forward. We're ripping the street out, street out, is there something that we can do from there?
So, so in my opinion on the pump, I mean, the pump, again, what it is acting, so, so I would, I guess, to be blunt, no, I would not recommend putting in a permanent pump, and, but the, what the pump is doing is, again, we talked about that storm sewer that's, that is, you know, the size to convey the water down to Hickman, convey it south. The pump is essentially just adding a little bit of capacity to that, to pump it over the hill, if you will, on those, on those events when it fills up. So as, as Deputy Director Smith mentioned, the, for most, for many of the storm events, the sewer will keep up, and by the time they get there, it'll, it'll be out and under. Again, I think the storage chambers are the solution, in the sense of, one, storing the water under, also, we're using the storage chamber south on 47th Street, south of Holcomb, that pipe will also act as a large conveyance pipe, so that, in turn, that big pipe will get the water down to, to Hickman. And again, I know that's the year-long, but again, the pump, the pump itself, there isn't a pump that will keep up with a 100-year event. That's not, even, even our large pump stations downtown are not designed for, for those type of events. It's not, it would, I don't even know what size pump you could even do to even make an impact. What the pump is really doing is draining down the pool faster.
But Steve, the pump hasn't did anything, and we've never turned it on, right?
Well, but that's because the, the events that they're happening are, are getting down through, so it's not, but again, the goal of the pump is to drain down the pool faster, if needed.
I gotta ask another question.
Yeah.
I'm sitting here listening, and I'm hearing, the pump's never been turned on, but I heard, you know, a minute ago, I think that, from Jamie, I think, that they did turn it on, and they sent it west.
Hooked it up. They hooked it up.
Yeah, just hooked it up, but never turned it on.
They never turned it off.
They just put the hose away west.
They hooked the whole thing, they threw the hose down there and never turned it on.
And the hose was going, the hose is going the different direction than what the protocol had called for.
I get, I got that.
Okay. Yeah, and I understand, I understand the 100-year flood and all of that, but like Chris had said, what you're dealing with is a lot of neighbors that have had their basements flooded multiple times, they've lived there for years, and so as soon as that gets up to the curb, yes, it's in the street, but those neighbors start thinking it's coming in their basement.
Well, then it's halfway up the yard. In 20 minutes, it's gonna be in your basement, guarantee.
And he's right. By the time somebody gets there, and a pop-up storm, okay, it's a pop-up storm, there's nothing you can do, but by the time they get there, he's right. If it just coming up to the curbs, actually goes over the curbs and into the yards, over the sidewalk, 25 minutes, it can be drained if it stops raining.
Yep.
But if it doesn't stop raining, then it's in their basements.
Yeah.
And so we're just looking for another layer of protection to not, maybe not permanently automate the pump, or change the protocol, or whatever it can do to add a layer until this project gets done. That's what we're looking for.
Bill, Bill's made this a big priority in the last couple of weeks, and I thank you for that. My summary, after watching these neighbors for a long time, especially since June 30th, is they feel lucky, and they'd like to, they'd like it not to be luck that keeps them from getting flooded. You know, that we have the right procedures in place that we all agree with. We've been, we've been lucky. There's no basements that have been filled. But there's been nights where they've looked out there wondering, you know, is, are they coming to, are they coming?
When it starts raining, there's no cars on the street. Everybody gets up at 2 o'clock, goes out, moves their cars, not out of the street, but out of the driveways and parks them a block and a half up the road.
Yeah.
And that's the kind of anxiety that you're dealing with, even, even a small rain, so. And I understand the, the way, goes away real fast in, in the 100-year, you know, we can't solve everything, but we're just looking for another layer, so.
While I have you two here, I appreciate that you're communicating with Jenny and keep doing that, but I'm gonna send you a list of our emails and our phone numbers, so you can include us on those communications about our neighborhood, because I don't know about this.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying about Operator.
Yeah, so, but I'll email them to you, so you have whomever wants to be on that communication, we'll get those to you.
Perfect.
Good, thank you.
That's a great idea.
All right, anybody else have, anything else say?
Thanks for your time.
Yeah, you bet.
I just wanted to make a few points here for you to consider as well, from Mr. Gatto, thank you for your questions. But in '08, my house was flooded with three feet of water, and at that time, FEMA came out and actually did help compensate for the damages. However, this time, when I had six feet, two feet in my garage, two feet in my vehicle, which totaled my lawnmower, all that stuff in my garage, my vehicle, all of that, no FEMA, because we were so isolated. It was an isolated incident. I've been there for 29 years, so 93 obviously was an issue as well. I just wanted to mention...
Kathy, what is your address?
2517 47th Street.
2517 47?
Right. I do have a question regarding the recent development within, like, probably a three-block area. There's, I think, planned development at Franklin and 48th Street? Mr. Gray, you might know about that. Yeah. And I'm concerned about what that might involve with the sewers, or storm sewers in my area, but also...
I'll put Steve on the, we've been studying the Franklin Avenue sewer system, along with...
Yeah, and then Powell Manor, and that, that whole development there, and how that would impact the system.
Keep you busy, Steve.
I need, yep, I need, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, Steve Neighbors, City Engineer, and so, and I apologize, walking back, but if the, the question regarding Franklin Avenue, that, that actually is a piece of the, the big sewer that we're talking about.
Closest Creek.
So, so that type of a design does, we're, we're actually moving forward with the design of the next phase. So the Macokata, the Macokata, and I wish I had my, I have a, a map that shows all this, but the Macokata sewer, the box that goes up Macokata is kind of that first phase, that that's, that's under contract, and council authorized that one to move forward. And then we're, we're working on is the design of the sewer connecting that up, which eventually gets to the 47th and Holcomb. So that, that sewer that's under design is, is part of that. Yes, it's a couple of years away, but the process takes a while when you're dealing with that type of sewer. And then because that sewer's, the large sewer's going down the street, the street also needs work, anytime we're reconstructing a road of that nature, we want to at least take a look at what should the cross-section be? And so there was a public meeting that was held with, I think, probably over 60 or 70 people attended, and there was a lot of people there. And so that, that meeting was to get feedback on what the cross-section of the road should, that we should put back, 'cause right now, frankly, it's just a, a wide sea of pavement, and so, so we want to look at our Move DSM and what the neighborhoods' opinions are on those street cross-sections. So, so that is related to the next phase of the Closest Creek large sewer, we're just in the design.
Just, you may have been talking about, like, the development of where the hospital and the Frank, is that what you're talking about? The, like, building development?
Right. Which will put multiple units, multiple, you know...
One of the things I would say is, A, it's, it's kind of downstream from you and the sewer system, so it would, shouldn't build up water to you. The other thing that I've learned over time is, from a water management standpoint, new development is always good, because most of these projects were built before we had standards for them, you know, building a detention basin or managing their water. And so usually, when any new development happens, it's good for the, the storm system.
That's correct, yep. Yeah, any type of, like, a site development that triggers a threshold and adds impervious, what's called impervious area, like, so for example, hard surfaces, rooftops, parking lots, they, they would need to provide, meet a couple thresholds. There's a water quality standard that we have, so in terms of treating storm water in that first flush, the first flush of the rain, and then there's also a, a flood storage component where they have to detain the runoff from the added impervious areas, so the councilman is correct. Yep, yep.
Steve, thank you.
And then I just also wanted to mention that that event last year ago in July was not predictable. I mean, that, that cloud just hung over there. Nobody could have predicted that, just like no one can predict or could have predicted the current flooding we're seeing around this, or outside of our state. And so personally, and I'm certain with my neighbors, we've kind of developed a PTSD sort of thing, where whenever it rains, we're, wherever we are in the world, we're worried about our basements, and if we're in the neighborhood, we're concerned about that pump. The text frenzy between us is just crazy. My, my phone starts beeping off, you know? So I'm just letting you know that, and then their solution with the holding tanks, their, their example is always parking lots, and neighborhoods are different than a parking lot, as far as proximity to a lot of things. So that's a concern as well, so. So thank you, appreciate your time.
Kathy, thank you. All right, if somebody could...
I will still move, receive and file all the comments.
All right.
Good job.
Move to...
Yeah, no, we got one more item here.
Oh, we do?
We have an extra item. This particular item was put on the, the agenda. It is a top-secret item.
It was, it was, it was top-secret to Jeff until 20 minutes before the meeting, too.
Right.
He had to scramble.
So this is the, whereas on May 4th, 2009, by roll call, number 09801, the City Council adopted the policy for naming of streets, facilities, and parklands in the city of Des Moines, and whereas this such policy provides for a council-initiated naming request, and also provides for the City Council to make exceptions to the staff or board commission review and recommendation or public hearing process set forth in the policy, upon finding appropriate circumstances, to consider or expedite the naming of a city street facility, parkland, or park facility, and whereas the City Council desires to commemorate and honor former City Clerk Diane Rao for her dedication of service to the city of Des Moines, and unanimously, and, and, since this is your last meeting, we don't mean, 'cause we expect you to stay here every minute until...
You're sitting at home, you're turning it off by now. You're watching something else.
That the naming of the first-floor foyer of City Hall is an appropriate action in light of her longstanding service of 35 years to the city of Des Moines, and whereas, in order to expedite such naming, the City Council desires to waive the requirements of the city's policy for naming of streets, facilities, and parkland for the naming of the foyer. I know that a lawyer wrote this, I'm telling you. We could've done it in a few less words. The foyer of City Hall in honor of Diane Rao, and now therefore be it resolved by the City Council, the city of Des Moines, that the first-floor foyer at City Hall shall be and is hereby named and to be known as the Diane Rao foyer, and it is sponsored by our own council member, Christopher Coltman.
We've had a lot of discussion, Diane.